Good evening and welcome to the February fifteenth radio meet, uh, special meeting of the town council. If you kindly rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I point to the flag of the United States of America and to give the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Only, I only have a couple of announcements. First, town office will be closed on Monday, February nineteenth for the observance of President's Day. And our upcoming town council meetings that we will be holding on Tuesday and February twentieth, a non-public meeting, Tuesday, February twentieth. Are these at seven o'clock, Paul?
The non-public is at.
The non-public's at six fifteen. The reg, all the regular meetings are at seven. At seven. So Tuesday, February twentieth, we have a special council meeting at seven P M. Thursday, February twenty second, there's no meeting, which was announced as a meeting a little bit ago, so just making that clear. And in Thursday, March fourteenth, we have a regular council meeting at seven P M. here in the Matthew Thornton room. Important days to remember, Wednesday, March thirteenth at seven P M. in the all-purpose room at the James Mastacola Upper Elementary School located at twenty-six, Evans Lake Road, is the deliberative session, the first meeting. And Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty-four, from seven A M. until seven P M. is the annual meeting voting day at your designated polling place that you can find at the town website or the Secretary of State's website.
Correct. I, I believe our link brings you right to the Secretary of State.
Yep.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wasserman Park, Wasserman Park and the Parks and Rec Department invite you to join them next Saturday, February twenty-fourth, at Wasserman Park for the thirty-second annual winter carnival. Everybody pray for snow. The event runs from twelve to three P M. and features thirty businesses and community organizations who will be offering free games, activities, and demonstrations. For questions, please contact Parks and Rec Department at six oh three eight eight two one zero four six. The following period for town offices will be in February twenty-first and run through March first. To be elected are three counselors for a three-year term, one ethics committee member for a what, three-year term, two library trustees for a three-year term, one trustee of trust funds for a three-year term, one moderator for a two-year term, one town clerk tax collector for a three-year term, one supervisor of the checklist for a six-year term. Candidates must file with the town clerk to have their name placed on the ballot and must be registered voter and domiciled in Merrimack per RSA six six nine colon six and six six nine colon nineteen. Candidates for town council must also be domiciled in Merrimack for at least one year, per the town charter, Article three dash four C. Dog licenses are now available at the town clerk's office. Per state law, all owners of dogs four months and older are required to license their dog by May first. Owners must present a valid rabies certificate and a neutering or spading certificate at applicable. If you no longer have your dog, please contact the town clerk's office at six oh three four two four three six five one, so that we may update your records. Thank you for your cooperation in this matter.
Thank you, Paul. Oh, yes, and I thank you for reminding me a second time. Nancy, Nancy Murphy is probably en route at this point. She had an extended stay up in the legislature today. All right. Comments from the present public? If anybody would like to address the council, they can do so at the table or at the mic in the middle. Seeing no one. We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements, no appointments. The first item on the agenda beyond that is a public hearing that, of the proposed municipal two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget and warrant articles. And want me to go through that list, or you want to just?
You, we can take them one at a time. Our first one's going to be the, the operating budget?
Yep, I, okay, it's, we're going over the operating budget, collective bargaining agreements, proposed issue, it's a debt, capital reserve deposits in the general fund, as well as the wastewater fund, and athletic fields construction, and it's about it. So, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I go over to the other position, I just want to say every, I gave all the counselors a sheet of proposed motions as we move forward tonight to kind of make it easier for the minute taker. There's going to be a lot of motions that are going to have to be made to move stuff to the warrant, then to review the warrant, and then move that to deliberative session as well. So, kind of a cheat sheet, or crib notes. Everybody should have one.
The ease for the minute taker is the best reason to do that.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. I come before you tonight to discuss the town councils. This is town council public hearing for the town of Merrimack, the town's council's operating budget, which will be moved forward to the deliberative session. What I like to do is bring everything forward, and the crux of the matter is what is going to be the tax rate. Right now, the budget that the council on a February, January voted through to pass through is a four dollar and forty-two cent increase, uh, tax rate, which is a thirty-seven cent increase on the tax rate from prior year. General fund obligations increased two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Revenues, however, decreased one point seven million dollars. Ovalay increased thirty-eight thousand, for a total increase of about one point nine million dollars on the tax rate, almost two million dollars. Some of the increases to appropriation, health insurance was a big one, as we all know, seventeen, one hu, seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Workers' comp increased, these are general fund numbers now, increased seventeen thousand dollars. General liability increased fourteen. Solid waste tipping went up eighteen. National Transit went up thirty-four. Electric, water, sewer, natural gas went up almost thirty. Machinery of equipment and vehicles went up almost twenty. Ammunition was thirty-two thousand. Uniforms of protective clothing was up twenty-seven thousand. I'm just hitting some of the highlighted ones. I'm not going through every one of these. If I did, we'd be here for five hours tonight. You know, welfare housing went up nineteen thousand five hundred. Snow plowing of the town lots, we estimate to go up twenty-two thousand dollars. Miscellaneous, I know that's a large number for miscellaneous, but when I was looking at this, there's a lot of one thousand, two thousand. When you have over fourteen hundred line items in your budget, to get up to the seventy thousand dollars doesn't take a lot, you know, five hundred, seven hundred dollar increase here and there. It's seventy, one seventy-one thousand. Compensated absence went up sixty thousand dollars. Union wages, including the steps for those unions, increased two hundred and seventy-two thousand. Because of those union wages with the steps, N H R S increased one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Benefits such as life, short-term disability, dental, unemployment, Social Security, Medicare, went up twenty-three thousand dollars. Fire overtime for both supervisors and the firefighters went up one hundred and fif, one hundred and sixteen thousand. Library included raises in their budget of thirty-two thousand. We, we added a position for an assistant tech coordinator of one hundred and eleven thousand. The safer grant, we've been saving for the safer grant for years. It's coming due February of twenty-five. So that's two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars that is going to the appropriation side of the house that, that we're not getting reimbursed for. However, you'll see an offsetting adjustment in the paving account of three hundred and twenty-five to cover that increase in the town's budget. Part-time custodian to full-time, we did a custodian of forty-one thousand dollars. Animal control officer, we're trying to make that a full-time position, is an increase of forty-one, forty-two thousand. We reduced the EMS part-time hours into a tune of about twenty thousand dollars. And deputy director and engineering to, civil engineering was about thirty-six thousand dollars. Total increases are two million one hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Savings, police vehicles, brine storage tank, street sweeping and pavement markings is about forty thousand dollars. And the reason why there's a savings for sweet, street sweeping is because we're not using as much sand in our mixtures. And we're using a magnesium on our, at, at the spreader locations, and where we can, we're using brine as well. So net savings of eighty thousand dollars, total general fund increase of two million one hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Now we get into some of the capital that we spent in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget that we're not going to spend again. Town hall sprinklers, parking lot restoration for about a hundred. We have some existing building repairs we need to do here for a hundred thousand dollars. The master plan is a seventy-five thousand, we cut that in half. We have the fuel storage tanks, which one point four million dollars. Brine storage tank, twenty-five, the solid waste trailer, net of seventy, because we have to do some site work, so there's some money left in there. It was a ninety thousand dollar savings. That's a total decrease in other capital of one million five hundred and fifty-five thousand four twenty-four. And there's that road infrastructure, which is the paving, offset three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Going into twenty-three, twenty-four, we knew we had to put some money aside for this year coming up, so that's where we put it last year to increase our paving. Now we're taking it out to pay that. Total increase in general fund, two hundred and thirty-seven oh seventy-six. If I go back up to slide number two, you'll see that two thirty-seven oh seventy-six of the increase in appropriations. Okay. Half, the other side of the ledger for the tax rate is revenues. And that is, we increased solid waste revenues, ten thousand dollars. Ambulance will can increase one hundred and fifteen thousand. Charges for services for our departments increased about forty-nine thousand. Miscellaneous, about thirteen. Insurance rebates decreased forty. Building permits were reducing twenty-five, and other building revenues of fifty-two thousand. Net increase of revenue is sixty-nine thousand four eighty-one, however, safer grant decrease of two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And then the, a big one is the reduction in the unreserved fund balance of roughly one point five million dollars. That's the one point four million dollars that we had for the gas station and the hundred thousand that we put in extra for relief of, relief of reduced property taxes last year. We're back to the nine eighty-four five hundred, which we've used for several years for total reduced, uh, fund balance to reduce taxes. Total decrease in revenue is one point seven million dollars on that, um, which is, if I go back to that slide, sorry, I should have put the slides where they are. One point seven million dollars is right there, a decrease in revenue. That's how we get the increase of two million dollars to the tax rate or thirty-seven cents. One thing in this budget that got pushed forward is there are no non-union raises. So the non-union raises aren't included in that. Before we can move this budget forward, the council's going to have to make a determination on non-union raises. I have a suggestion of what non-union raises should be. If you want me to go over that, I'll do that now, or do you want to ask questions about what we already have?
We're going to be going over the contracts anyway soon, right?
The contracts, yes, but not for non-union.
Oh, for non-union, right. I'm sorry.
Yes, we're in the, we're in the public hearing right now.
We haven't opened yet, but that's what this is.
I don't think we can go over anything official in the middle of a public hearing, can we?
When do we finish this, do the public hearing, then do that?
We might as well go through the public hearing and then.
Okay.
I, I don't.
Uh, it's up to. I don't know why it matters, but we can definitely easily wait.
Yeah, we can close this public hearing on this and then move forward with the.
To the next one.
Issues of non-union pay raises.
And by the way, I didn't notice when Nancy snuck in, but she's, has joined the meeting.
So Paul, maybe for the folks at home, as well as folks here who may not be familiar with it, can you just give, excuse me, a brief, twenty words or less, what the safer grant is?
Yes, the safer grant is, we got a grant from the federal government, a FEMA grant from the federal government for eight firefighters. So we had a three-year grant, hundred percent paid by the federal government for these eight firefighters. After the third year, they would come and the town would have to pay for them. We've been saving up for the last three years, a little bit more and more, putting in some non, non-recurring appropriations, such as the paving budgets and other capital reserve fund deposit, things of that sort. We've been putting money aside so that we would not have that big hit on the tax rate when it came due.
So it was a transitional kind of budget?
Yes. It's transitioning them into our operating budget and away from us receiving the revenues. That's a little more than twenty words, but.
Twenty-seven.
Just it, in an attempt to keep things relatively level as, as the years go on.
Right.
Uh, knowing that that money was going to disappear. Paul, on the ambulance revenue shows an increase of one hundred and fifteen, is that in anticipation of new fees structure, or is that?
That, that is anticipation of a couple of things. We're going to be coming forward, meaning we, meaning the fire chief and, and myself, coming forward to the town council to do the, us can increase of the Medicare plus. And that is only increasing it a small amount more than what we are. Right now, we're at Medicaid plus fifty. If we go to Medicare plus seventy-five percent, that would increase our revenues by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And that's still going to be low when we come in and do our presentation in April, May to the town council. Because revenues, we don't have to approve revenues with the budget, it's just nice to know what our revenues are. So before September, probably in the April, May, June timeframe, we'll be coming in with that presentation to the town council to look at changing our Medicare plus to seventy-five percent or higher. But we're one of the lowest ones in the area for sure, but also in the com, from Comstar itself. And we're working on, Comstar is our billing agency. So they give us rates of all the other areas for our similar billing site codes, and we're on the low end.
Anybody have any further questions? I mean, I'll open.
Yep.
One real quick question on the other building revenue and the decreases.
Yes.
Fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand dollars in other building revenue. Can you give any better idea what that's from?
Yeah, every April, we go through the tax dealing profit process. Last year, we had a property that went through the tax dealing process and got bought back by the owners. That was in the revenues, had a decrease in addition.
Okay.
I don't, I'm being optimistic. I'm hoping that we don't do, have to do tax dealing and go through the whole process again of the town council taking the property over and then having to sell it back. But every so many years, that's what happens.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll open the public hearing at seven twenty. If anybody would like to address council, you can come to the mic here in the center aisle. Pardon me. Oh, no, it's, all right. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing at seven twenty-one. So you're going to be moving on next to.
He wants to do, do you want to do the non-public, non, non-union now?
Can I please? Because I'd like to, I'd like to go with the motions, if we could. So what I ask in the council is for a four percent raise for the non-union employees. There are sixty-three full-time and regular scheduled part-time employees that are all considered non-union. Of this hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, only a hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and six dollars is general fund. It equates to three cents on the tax rate. Some of the reasons why I feel that the non-union should have a four percent tax rate is that our non-union employees are not eligible, we do not have a step system for non-union employees. Most of our, three or four of our unions have a step system, so they get that three percent plus a step. In addition, some of our unions have longevity and education. Non-union does not have longevity and education. A wage increase of these other groups include all those extra dollars or extra incentives to increase their pay. Non-union employees do not get that other incentive. Also, the four percent would keep us in pace with cost of living and current C P I's. So that would be my request that the council approves the four percent increase for non-union employees.
What'd you say the dollar amount was, Paul?
Total dollar amount on the appropriation would be a hundred and ninety-five, two hundred and eighty dollars, of which a hundred and eighty thousand six oh six would be for the general fund. We have, the media services has three employees that are all non-union. They are a self-supporting fund. And then we have two, uh, two non-union employees in the enterprise fund, the sewer fund. So they are also, would have to, that, that would also be a revenue too.
So that, those particular positions are paid through non-tax raised money?
Yes, the five positions there for media and the three for media and the two for wastewater are paid for non-tax paid one fees. They're paid through from fee services.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Nope.
So we have. So we have to decide what percent or less, or have a discussion about it. You've given good rationale, in my opinion. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think the rationale is good. I, I mean, I know a lot of people would rather see something like three percent, but when you take into account all those other factors you were talking about with steps and, and bonuses and uniforms and, and all that kind of stuff, a lot of the union members are getting significantly more benefit than, than the three percent. So the four percent's probably right. I wanted to ask to make sure I understood the number that you're looking for here. Is it a hundred and ninety, two eighty?
Yeah, a hundred and ninety-five, two eighty.
My, my page says one ninety, two eighty. I was just. End of the motions.
Hold on a sec. Sorry.
Are you adding the one eighty, the eight point six, and the six?
Six oh five five, yeah.
You get that number?
One ninety-five, two eighty.
Okay, so this number's not right.
Yeah, not one ninety-five, two eighty. Yes, please.
So what he said was accurate, not here.
Right.
Yeah, the motion should be for one ninety-five, two eighty, yes.
I'll move to, to increase the town budget per non-union pay increase of four percent in the amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Motion by Tom Kenny, second by Barbara. Does anybody have any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the.
Do we have to do a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing.
Oh, that's.
It's just a discussion.
Right.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, seven zero zero.
Thank you, and I'm sure the non-union employees, thank you as well. Could I have a motion now to move the thirty-nine million seven seventy-eight five sixty-six for the operating budget to the town warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Barbara, second by Tom Koenig. Any further discussion on that motion? See none? Call the question on it. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero.
I don't know, I'm getting dizzy though.
All right, close your eyes for a second. Um, the next one is.
Are you doing in order?
Yes.
The New England Police Benevolent Association, N E P B A, local twelve.
Thank you. Um, N E B P A twelve contract is for the police officers, detectives, and sergeants. There are thirty-seven members in this union. They, we reached an agreement for a three-year deal totaling about six hundred and forty-nine thousand four sixty-eight. In the first year of the contract, we implemented a new wage scale for patrol. It was two percent and then a four percent between steps towards the end of the scale. They're on a six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, and thirty-month system. That's their pay scale for this contract. Everyone else, meaning the detectives, master patrolmen, sergeants, are everywhere else would get a two percent in between steps. We did a three percent wage increase, and then we also did a wage adjustment. And it came up, the union negotiated, they want, they, they brought this to the table to reduce their longevity payments that they would get on a yearly basis. The three percent plus wage adjustments would help us bring our patrol and the members, the thirty-seven members in this union to the average of communities for, for the police department, that, with similar positions. In the second year, we did a three percent wage, uh, wage increase, plus some wage adjustments. And the union stepped up to the table again, and they said, we'll, we'll forego longevity in years two and three of the contract, to make the numbers work for us and for the town. And then we did a three percent plus wage adjustment with no longevity. That summary. There was other things. There was a lot of language that we cleaned up, that we, we needed to get, and we cleaned up with, uh, with this union. We brought the, the job titles up to date. It's no longer patrolmen, because we do have some women in the, in the force now, so it's patrol officers. So we had to politically correct and make the language right. So they brought that up to date. We defined what the detail rate would be in the contract. That's always been a gray area with, with this union. It's going to be their base salary rate, plus applicable incentives, plus applicable longevity times one point five, which is, and, uh, which will help, they'll define it more for us. And then everyone who is not hired before July first, two thousand and twelve, they do not have longevity on details, on not longevity. They don't have New Hampshire retirement on details. So we added a provision for an initial, an additional twelve dollars and fifty cents to their rate when they do a detail, because they do not have the retirement system. Once again, these two items that I just discussed are detail rates. They are paid by private organizations. They do not cost the taxpayers of Merrimack money. They are paid by a private organization. So this is just getting reimbursed from those private organizations. We talked about the decrease in longevity already. We looked at life insurance, and one of the things we tried to do in this contract negotiations is we're trying to get all our benefits the same across the board for everybody when it comes to life, health, dental, disability. And so they, we're increasing the spouse's portion of, um, of life to ten thousand and child to five. They're going to get one times base pay, which is the same across the board for all the other, majority of all the other employees of town. Disability, employees to use sick leave to supplement disability payments to get up to a hundred percent of regular pay. Workers' comp is the same, and if they exhaust D L, all their D L A, they can then either elect to use their, what they call P L A, or elect not to and just get their workers' comp check. Bereavement, once again, was consistency with the town groups. We reduced the number of hours required to notice people if they're on vacation from seventy-two to forty-eight. And then we had a policy in the contract dating back to nineteen eighty-seven. And even though it was on a bulletin board at the police station, we felt that, uh, we need to take that out and actually cement it into the contract. I, I, I can't tell you how many contracts from nineteen eighty-seven forward. You know, so I finally, after a while, it was driving me crazy. I'm like, why do we have a policy that basically the year I got out of high school, year after, after I got out of high school, was still, we're still relying on in a contract? So we cemented that language into the contract, and basically it's up to date with, with the recommendations of the department and, um, for use of the P L A account or their personal leave account. You also have a disability leave account, which we stream, clarified the language, because there's always been a question mark of what I can I use disability leave for or not. So we streamlined the language there. And we also talked about cashing in earned time, which also was another gray area in the contract. If you're over this many days and you have this many hours, you get this. But what happens if I don't have that? So we, we clarified that language now to make it easier for payroll. The first year of the contract, these are the positions that are, that are in this contract. The first year of the contract, it's a total cost of two hundred and nine, two ninety-three eight thirty-seven or six cents on the tax rate. Year two is a hundred and seventy. Year two is a hundred and seventy-four, sixty-five or three cents on the tax rate. And year three, it's a hundred and eighty-five, one thirty or four cents on the tax rate. I do want to say that longevity, by, by forfeiting their longevities in year two and three, that was almost seventy thousand dollars that this union gave up in wages because they felt that, uh, to get this contract through, to get people in the door and to keep people at the average rate of pay was something they really wanted. So total contract cost is six hundred and forty-nine thousand, four, four sixty-eight or thirteen cents.
Thank you, Paul. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right, um, I will then open the public hearing at seven thirty-one. If anybody would like to address counsel, please step to the mic. See no one coming, I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-two. All set. Um, and what is the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion that we move two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, eight hu, two hundred and ninety-three, that, thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars for the collective bargaining agreement between the, between the town and NEPBA Twelve contract to the town warrant.
Second.
Motion by McKenzie, seconded, uh, uh, motion by McKenzie Murphy, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Is there any further discussion on your motion? See none? I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero. Thank you, everybody, Paul. Next, we have the New England Police Benevolent Association, NEPBA Local One Twelve, uh, which is dispatch and police office staff.
Correct. Um, this union has twelve members. Um, we have a four-year deal totaling one hundred and forty-six thousand, two thirteen. In year one, dispatchers would get a three percent wage increase plus a dollar twenty adjustment. And we added a, added a five-year and ten-year step. The significance of a five and ten-year step is that this is a very difficult job. You gotta remember, you're, they're dealing with most people on their worst day of their lives. And they have to be calm, cool and collected, make sure they get the right resources out to the emergency. So you want people to stay in your dispatchers for five and ten years that want to do the job and do a good job on the job. So that's why we thought the significance of adding this, those steps. Records clerk was a three percent wage accre, increase. Prosecutor secretary was a three percent plus a one dollar adjustment. Once again, looking at the averages for both dispatchers and the prosecutor secretary, trying to move them to the average of other communities. So we don't, we don't become the training grounds for other communities where people start here, get two or three years underneath their belt and then leave because training employees is a very costly, especially in dispatch and police. It's a long process and once they get trained up, you want to keep them for as long as possible. And year two of this contract, dispatchers would get a three percent plus a seventy-five cent adjustment. Police records clerk and the prosecutor secretary would just get a, what, three percent? And year three, dispatchers just get three percent, records and prosecutor's tr, prosecutor secretary get three percent plus fifty cents. And year four, dispatchers, rec clerk and the prosecutor secretary get a three percent wage adjustment. This is one of those unions that really, a lot of the information is tied to our current policies because they formed later on, they formed in the late, uh, early two thousands. So a lot of the language is, is similar to what is in the town's personnel policy. So you'll see some stuff like shift differential, we increased shift differential. And they have a part-time dispatcher with regularly scheduled hours that we've included in the shift differential. Um, this woman works Friday and Saturday night, she works the overnight shift from eleven to seven. So we thought it was fair that we include her in the shift differential. Uh, increase the training stipend because they do do a lot of training with new, uh, new people. Um, fifty cents additional per hour, hopefully with all these rate increases and getting the right people in there who want to stay the training, they won't be using the training stipend as much. Um, and then leave her absence, uh, they bereavement leave, they changed to be in line with non-union. Uh, they removed family medical leave, they removed fa, military leave and they removed maternity leave from their contract and just said town policy. When this union was formed, they took the personnel policy and said, "This is our contract" at that time. So going through these iterations, the union stepped up and said, "Yeah, you can remove that stuff, we are following the town policies anyways." So, um, that just makes our human resource time a little bit easier than trying to figure out what contract for bereavement and everything else. And that's really, we're trying to save time and payroll and human resources so we're not individualizing. Each contract's a little different in some of these, um, areas. In the first year of the contract, it's fifty-nine thousand dollars, fifty-nine, four ninety-three. And year two, uh, one cent, roughly a one cent on the tax rate. In year two, it's thirty-eight, eight sixty-eight, another roughly a penny on the tax rate. In year three, twenty-five, three thirteen. I can't put a half a cent, but it's, I rounded up to its cent on it. And then, um, in year four, twenty-two, oh eighty-nine, because year three was a cent, year four would be no charge. Uh, roughly for a penny on the tax rate, it's about fifty thousand dollars. So, four-year total contract cost, one hundred and forty-six, two thirteen or three cents total for this contract over the life.
Okay, so, any questions? And I'll open the public hearing at seven thirty-eight. If anybody would like to address the council, step to the mic. Nothing seems to change in the audience, so we'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-nine and it's the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Chairman, I move fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars for collective bargaining agreement between the town and the NEPBA One Twelve to the town warrant.
I'll make a second.
Motion by Tom Kenny, seconded by McKenzie. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero. Thank you. Next, we have Teamster Local Six Thirty-three, which is the public work supervisors and secretaries.
Yes, and that's for highway, solid waste, equipment maintenance and wastewater. Uh, there's fourteen members in this union. Three-year deal totaling one hundred and seventy-nine, one forty-seven. Uh, year one, we implemented a wage scale. Added three percent to the top of the scale and then two point five percent in between steps. Placed each employee on the scale and moved one step. This union did not have steps. Over the last three negotiations, they requested steps. Uh, we looked at the steps and it's not just going to be, um, uh, it's tied to merit. Steps are tied to merit, which is different than any other of the contracts that have steps. So, um, they had merit in their contract, I did not want to give that up. And we tied the wage scale with the steps to merit. And year two of the contracts are three percent and a wage adjustment and then three percent and a wage, wage adjustment. Um, we deleted Cadillac tax language, um, from this contract. We changed the short-term disability from sixty percent without a cap to seventy percent cap or, uh, seventy percent plus a seven hundred dollar week cap. So, um, that was a big change that, that, uh, ties into the rest of disability insurance payments that we make throughout town. Um, and then we, we made the employees, we explained what leaves and how they can use what leaves for when they're out on short-term disability and workers' compensation. Um, however, they can opt out if they're on workers' compensation, just get the workers' compensation check. Um, we increased the boot allowance from two hundred to three hundred dollars, uh, similar to the other, uh, laborer's contract. And we included the secretary scale operator at the transfer station into the boot allowance. He's not, uh, he's doing a lot more than just, uh, sitting there at the scale and, and taking, as people drive across the scale, putting down weights of their vehicles for trash. He's out there and about. He's using, uh, he's in the transfer station building, he's up in the other, the waste building, he's cutting grass, he's doing a lot of other things. It's more of a safety concern, so we gave it to him, the boot allowance. Uh, year one of the contract is eighty-four thousand, seven sixty-two. Impact on the tax rate is it's, uh, one cent. The reason why the impact on the tax rate is one cent is because forty-four thousand, five sixty-six is coming from the sewer, wastewater treatment enterprise fund, which is a fee fund that they cover their cost. So the cost, um, for, for the, the contract on the general fund or the tax rate is one cent. Year two, fifty-four thousand, two thirty-two, one cent. And year three, forty thousand, one forty-three, once again, I can't split a half a cent, so it was zero in year three. The total cost of this contract is two cents, if you remember that wastewater, the wastewater employees are on the enterprise fund and it's a sewer fund and it's a fee-based service. So that does not come off of the tax rate, it comes off the tax rate, I should say.
Paul, I don't remember talking about the, deleting the Cadillac tax, is that because it's no longer a deal?
It's, it's, we put that language in there because of the, uh, Healthcare Act, where that if you had Cadillac plans, but since co, Washington and Congress revoked that language and that law.
I assume that's.
We don't need it anymore in our, our contracts.
No, and good enough, and I thought that was what it was, but I didn't remember.
Yes.
Hearing about it. Um, does anybody have any?
I just wanted to point out, part of the reason you, you might not see us discussing this a lot is we've gone through this already, that basically the discussion tonight is for the benefit of the public hearing. Um, so for those who are watching, we're not asking a lot of questions because we got a chance to do that already.
Unless you missed something like.
Unless you missed some piece or, well, something, but anyway, just wanted to point that out.
For an entire month. Thank you, Tom.
And, and the other thing is that these are negotiated contracts. Once they've been accepted by the town council and rat, and accepted by the union, they have to go on the ballot the way they are. You can't make changes right now because it's a negotiated contract.
Right.
So it's ratified, so it has to go and be ratified by the voting population in April.
Yep. So if nothing further, I'll open the public hearing at seven forty-three. Nobody seems to be approaching the mic, so we'll close it at seven forty-four, which is always awkward because you know that it's changed, but.
It's like the penny.
It's like the penny. So, uh, all right, what's the pleasure of the, of the council?
I'd like to move eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two for collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Teamsters to the town warrant.
Second.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion on your motion? Call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstain, seven zero zero. Okay, next is proposed issuance of debt. You stapled these together?
Never have the finance director slash town manager use a copy.
It's a mess. I found it.
You're lucky we got copies.
I know, but I could look right up here and see it, but.
Honestly, these things came hot off the press at four forty-five, so that's one of the reasons why.
No.
I had to use the copy machine. Once again, when I walk in the copy machine room, they all come running and kick me out, so.
Yeah, that's a good move.
So, um, the proposed issuance of debt we have this year is, uh, based on Pine Knoll Shores. It's the design and permit phase of the Pine Knoll Shore study that we did a couple of years ago. Um, it's to finalize the conceptual design engineering report, including performance of wetland delineations, geotechnical investigation and additional surveys as deemed necessary. Uh, to finalize the conceptual design plan to, everything's finalized here. Finalize the cost estimates. Prepare bid documents so that when we are ready to go out to bid for this project, we have the documents. And then we would have to prepare permitting, uh, for, uh, with New Hampshire DES for alteration of terrain, ensure land protection and any town permits versus the US ACE wetland permit. The total cost of this project is two hundred and sixty-six, three thirty-eight. There is a match as well from the SRF grant program, NHDES of, uh, about ninety-two thousand dollars. I won't get at Leo because he wrote up the, uh, the work and I forgot to put that bullet in there, about ninety-two thousand dollars. And Leo's here to answer any questions you might have.
And that matches from the DES, is that what?
That matches from the DES of ninety-two thousand, so this would be reduced by that ninety-two thousand dollars.
But we have to move the two sixty-six initially.
Correct. The DES is very specific with this. Even though it's only two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars and after you take out, say, the hundred thousand dollars for round numbers, it's a hundred and sixty-six. I would not bond that in the town of Merrimack for X number of years. But to get the grant reimbursement of the ninety thousand dollars plus thousand dollars, we have to put it on the bo, as, on the warrant as a bond.
Ah.
So that's how we have to put this on the warrant and that's why we are having the public hearing for it. There is language that we put in the warrant article that basically says that the town council can use any funds they deem necessary to offset this cost, which would be coming out of our road infrastructure capital reserve, our dr, from our drainage portion of it.
This is the one where last year we had to do seventy-five thousand dollars.
Seventy-five thousand dollars and they gave us a grant of seventy-five thousand dollars on both ends.
Yeah.
But this one's a little bit more, two sixty-six, they're only reimbursing us about ninety-two to ninety-six thousand.
And I don't, uh, I was just recalling that, I don't know if I heard what our maintenance situation was for this, for the future maintenance costs.
We, we actually have that and if you would mind, Leo, would you come up?
Come on down.
I have a lot of numbers floating, I don't want to give you the wrong one, but Leo.
Perfect.
Leo did do some of this stuff for us. This is Leo Lovett. He is the DPW Assistant, uh, Deputy DPW Director for Environmental.
Thank you, everyone. Um, so it was mentioned last time when we did the, uh, presentation on the Pine Knoll Shores, what the, uh, maintenance would be, and it's, keep in mind, it's not completely designed yet. Um, I did a rough table on this. Uh, the maintenance, yearly maintenance costs will be about four hundred dollars a year in, uh, mostly wetland plant, uh, re-establishment. I initially estimated our highway department would have to, um, probably use about eleven hours of time to maintain the, the structures and the wetlands in the, in the area. Um, and I assumed that that might take about ten hours of time off of the, um, the maintenance of the dirt roads right now. So part of the project is to pave most of the dirt roads, all the dirt roads, Pine Knoll Shores. After speaking with the highway director, apparently there's a lot more time that's used up there to re-establish the roads in the spring and also during the winters, um, they go out with, uh, a different sand salt mix. It's actually a, a rock salt mix to keep the roads, you know, passable. Also, the highway director has to go out after storms and chip the ice off the roads. So there's a lot of actual labor savings, which I can't really quantify, I'm estimating maybe twenty-five crew hours per year. Um, but there's going to be some labor savings just in the, in the, uh, uh, improvements there, mostly because we're paving those roads.
That makes perfect sense. I didn't even think about that.
Yeah.
You're just worried about these plantings that are supposed to collect the, everything out of it every five years or whatever, they'd have to be changed and so on, but.
Yeah, there'll be regular cleanings of that, but most of that is, is the same, uh, crews and equipment that we clean catch basins with.
Yep.
Um, I had the five hundred dollars or four hundred dollars per year of wetland plant re-establishment because you have to imagine some of the plants will die off and they have to be replaced.
Oh, perfect. Thanks, Leo.
Great.
Thanks. Very good. All right. Second.
That's why I brought it up, Nancy.
No, it was, it was perfect. And that was a, a great explanation for me. It worked. So if there's nothing, um, do you have anything? No, um, then I'll open the public hearing at seven fifty-one. And if anybody would like to address the council, feel free, and seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing at seven fifty-two.
And again, another point should be made is we have a separate presentation of this as well. So a lot of the specifics were debated that night. Clarification.
Yeah. Will we have anything at the town meeting?
Yeah, yes, we will actually have a presentation if. Yeah, yes, we will actually have a presentation if the town moderator so deems that necessary. We'll have a presentation and we'll go over the presentation. Leo will.
Leo will. That's a great thing about being the boss, you can designate.
All right.
And when you're at the bottom of the hill, you're at the bottom.
Nancy.
I'd like to move.
Please.
I moved two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the Pine Knoll Shores drainage study to the town warrant, and my mic was off, I think. I'll do it again. Uh, I moved two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the Pine Knoll Shores drainage study to the town warrant.
I'll make a second.
Motion by Nancy Murphy, second by Mackenzie Murphy.
I just wanted to to clarify, this is does go in as a bond article.
Correct.
Even even though we're not going to bond it for five years for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Um, but it has to go in as a bond, so it needs sixty percent approval.
Three fifths, yes.
Um, and and that's part of DES's requirements.
Correct.
Nope, very good. Thank you, Tom. Right, seeing no further discussion, call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. Next, Leo. Next, um, Paul, is a potential purchase of land.
Yeah, um. I've been working on a deal to purchase some land in town since May. Uh, got a phone call on tech, uh, actually an email Wednesday from the person that I've been dealing with. Um, they're going to make a, their partners are meeting tomorrow to make a final determination. So what I'm asking the town council to do is to continue this portion of the public hearing for the purchase of land to February twentieth at seven PM in the Memorial Conference Room at Six Budzuk Lake Road.
Is that a continuation or a tabling?
Uh, continue, uh, continue the public here. You're going to continue this public hearing till February twenty, this portion of it.
Thank you. Motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Barbara.
And that's critical to call it a continuation because we're not going to send out another public notice about it.
Yes, we do not have enough time.
Meeting on the twentieth.
Oh, it's, I was just told it's going to be in this room.
Uh, well.
You go bump to where?
So sorry, it'll be in the moment, it'll be here in the Matthew Thornton room. Sorry, if we can make that friendly amendment.
So the change is instead of the Memorial Conference Room, it'll be in the Matthew Thornton Room.
Very good. All set? The motion? Paul is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. Thanks to the planning board.
Yes, thank you.
All right, uh, capital reserve deposits into the general fund.
Yes. About I don't know, seven years ago now? Um, the uh
State in its infinite wisdom.
Yes, the RA, after doing it for twenty-plus years of including capital reserve fund deposits in our operating budget, told me that the capital reserve fund's deposits have to be voted on separately in its separate warrant article. Uh, we had three choices that they gave me. One, don't do it. Two, do it individually, or three, do it as a lump sum. Uh, at that time, the council chose option three to do it as a lump sum, because if we had to do these individually, the town warrant would be about ten pages long at the voting ballot. It would be about ten pages long with each individual warrant article. So with that said, um, we're looking to deposit two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the, for the general fund, deposits into capital reserve funds. It's an increase of three hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, this is our savings accounts that we deposit things in. Four, ambulances, athletic field construction, communications equipment, computer equipment. Um, Daniel Hepster, highway plow, uh, paving, fire trucks and fire equipment. Highway trucks, our six-wheel dump trucks, our plows, our excavators, um, our backhoes, our front loaders. We don't, yes, we do have an excavator. We have a four-wheel excavator. Um, library building maintenance fund. Um, they use this fund to uh refurbish their elevator. Uh, playground, playground equipment, uh, you know, slides, swings, new new fixtures and playgrounds. Property reval- revaluation, um, every five years, we need to do the proper evaluation. I know that if we put this on the warrant separately, it would probably fail every year because nobody wants their property reevaluated. However, it's a costly expense for the town of Merrimack, so we save up for it.
And it has to be done.
And it has to be done by DRA. So we'd have to be paying for it out of our tax base. This way we can smooth our tax base. Uh, solid waste equipment, our loaders, our tractors, our trailers, uh, traffic light preemption systems. Those are those little red lights that are on top of the traffic lights. So when emergency vehicles are approaching, the light changes so the emergency vehicle has the right of way and can continue through the traffic light. GIS, uh, road infrastructure, those are the, all the bridges that we are doing in town, that we have done in town, uh, the intersections. Uh, drainage projects, that's all comes out of this road infrastructure. Um, and then we do have some milfoil. We'll be hearing another uh, another public hearing after this about milfoil. This is an expendable trust that the town set up for the milfoil, their portion of it. Um, all said, it's, like I said, two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The reason why we use capital reserve funds is to not have what I call the EKG uh effect on uh having to buy a fire truck at a million dollars one year and having to put that all in on the budget. And the tax rate spikes twenty cents, and then the next year it falls off to twenty cents. Um, we try to smooth out the tax rate to incorporate these capital reserve deposits so that we don't get those high spikes throughout. Um, one other thing about this road infrastructure capital reserve fund, a lot of the bridges in town that we have done are through the Bridge Age pro- Bridge Aid Program at the state. And because we have this road infrastructure fund, our bridges got moved ahead of a lot of communities because they did not have the resources or the town vote to approval to reconstruct some of their bridges. So some of our bridges got moved up in the system because we had this money sitting there.
And the great advantage of that is what?
Costs went through the roof.
But we were able to take advantage of the state grants where we paid twenty percent and they paid eighty percent.
Correct.
So there's a great monetary advantage of this as well.
Not only that, but the the time too, moving it up and and moving our bridges up because uh a lot of our bridges got done pre-COVID, knock on wood, because after COVID, steel prices spiked. And they would cost a lot more now to do. So that is the general fund capital reserve fund um, that we are are proposing, two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, an increase of around three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that's mostly because of increased cost that we're seeing. You know, um, when I first started back twenty years ago almost, a dump truck with a plow cost seventy-five thousand dollars. Now they're pushing three hundred thousand dollars. So in twenty years, it's really gone up significantly. A fire truck, um, you know, the ladder truck we bought for one point five million dollars, case in point, is now, if we went out and bought it today, it's two million dollars plus an escalation clause.
Right, because it takes a year and a half to build or whatever.
Almost two years to build.
Yeah, we haven't even taken the delivery of it, and it's already increased that much. That's amazing.
Yeah, so.
When it comes to the big trucks.
We locked in at one point five million dollars, by the way, so we're not going to get any hit. That's, our truck costs us one point five million dollars.
But that's what's happening now.
Happening now, and that's why some of these increases in some of these capital reserve funds.
Um, did we notice on our our plow trucks and everything, uh, the highway garage is how old, is it four years old now, five years old?
Yep.
Um, have we noticed, do they seem to be looking better for wear or?
Yeah, yes, they are. We're pushing them out a little bit longer to that twelve-year period, but we still have some of those trucks that we're cycling through still, and we knew they were going to be three to five years to cycle those trucks through. And that's where we're at with some of the stuff, but yeah, they are.
I mean, the new ones, the the new ones that have been housed since they came into the service.
They are looking a lot better.
Because I was counting on twelve years minimum, and I was, my, what I was leaning to is like, are we able to stretch it to a little bit more? Are they looking good for wear compared to being left outside in the weather and so on?
Yeah, not only that, but because we're bringing them inside in their house in a heated environment, they can wash them.
Right.
To get the salts off of them, and that's what really, what really corrodes on them is their their ma- their frames.
Yeah, so you're telling me we might get thirteen or fourteen?
We have not run through those trucks yet.
That's what I hear.
We're 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 trying to get there. We're trying to get our fleet there, but uh, yes, I'm hoping that uh the first truck that was the brand-new truck after we built it will not be seen for another ten years.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you, Paul. That was, it was mean, that's okay. So, uh, where are we?
Was one of the rationales for the whole thing.
Right, and we we are starting to push them out to twelve, but we have some of those older trucks that we we have to get through that have seen better days.
Right.
This says we're putting two point two into the capital reserve fund. Do you know what roughly what the balance is, all of our capital reserve funds?
Yes, I do. Um, just give me a sec.
Sorry, I thought maybe you'd have it handy off the top of your head. I didn't mean to make you rush.
The total that we have in capital reserve funds is six million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred. Estimated as of six thirty, twenty-five with no expenses. Our estimated balance as of six thirty, twenty, twenty-four would be four million, roughly four point one million dollars.
Okay.
If we include the sewer fund, that would be another one point one million dollars in the sewer fund.
But we use that strictly for the sewer.
Sewer, sewer, sewer pump houses, we have some additional things that we need to do, especially now that they're widening the FEA return pipe. There are going to be some additional costs that we're going to have to take out of that.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
We have to open the public hearing.
Yep, which I'll do at eight oh four. Anybody would like to address the council, please step to the mic. So I'll close the public hearing at eight oh five. What's, somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move the two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the general fund capital reserve fund to the town warrant. I'll make a second.
By Barbara, second by Mackenzie. No further discussion of the motion. I'll call the question. All those in favor. Tom, sorry.
Thank you. I looked the wrong way that time. Um, I, generally speaking, I I approve of these funds and I voted against this number in the past. However, because we put it forward as a single number like this, I want to to make sure that that I vote in favor of it because I believe that what we're doing in general with these funds is cor- correct. It it frustrates me that the ambulance fund is more than doubling the amount needed this time. And and that was explained that it's because the cost of those vehicles has gone up dramatically. As we talked about with the fire trucks and and the dump trucks and things like that, we're seeing some huge increases in the cost of equipment. Uh, and we have to be prepared for that. Unfortunately, it means that we have to add two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to or more, three hundred thousand dollars to the amount we put aside this year, and it's kind of tough in this tax year, fifteen percent increase, but um, we we do need to replace these, this equipment that we wear out over the period of five to ten years. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Tom. Barbara?
And I also would add to that as well is that because we have the money set aside, we don't have to go out and bond everything. So not only do we get the equipment faster, we pay for it, we don't incur the interest as well.
All right. No further discussion. Uh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero.
And Councilor Hunter, to answer your question, this is what was in the CIP for twenty-four and twenty-five. And as you can see, we're looking at almost four million dollars worth of expenses.
And and all of that is stuff we were buy, if we didn't save up for it, we would still have a requirement to go buy.
Correct.
We would either just have a spike in the tax rate or we'd go borrow the money.
Correct, correct.
Thanks.
And to answer your question, Councilor Rothhouse, as you see the one truck, I'm replacing a bucket truck H eighteen. It's a, the lift was replaced in two thousand twenty-two. Um, but the truck, so we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars for that truck because there, the the boom is failing. We we bought a new chassis, but we we move, we we, the boom, the replacing the lift, we replaced the lift in twenty twenty-two. We put the old lift on the new truck in twenty twenty-two. So we're looking at replacing the truck this year. So, uh, but H twenty-three, which is a six-wheel dump truck, is two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Or for a six-wheel dump truck.
I think they take advantage of things. There's just no doubt.
And and right, wrong, or indifferent, there are new standards on these engines.
Sure.
Um, the engines of really what's driving the cost on a lot of these things.
One company, right?
One co- one or two companies, Detroit Diesel or Cummings. And those are the only two engines really you can get, and because of the EPA emission standards on these engines, they are going up fifty thousand dollars every time there's a revamp on their engine. So the new engine of that two-ten, fifty thousand dollars is just an increased cost of a new eng- of the new engine. Um, and we talked a little bit about the wastewater treatment, that there's some expenses, looking at one point three million dollars next year out of wastewater as well, to replace one pickup truck. Um, redoing a bump pump station. Um, and then that's the sewer relocation underneath the F- FEA return pipe down on Executive Park Drive. And we're in, for those people who were here Tuesday night, I asked DOT about that. And we're going to start talking about it because we need to know where we're going to stand because we we're cohabitating with a drainage pipe in our sewer. And I think they're abandoning their drainage pipe, but does that mean they're abandoning the covert or what they're going to do with the the covert or the underneath the highway? So we're in talks with them for this, but we do have money saved for if we have to move it. So.
Okay. So capital reserve fund deposits wastewater.
Yes. Um, sorry. Uh, sewer fund infrastructure improvements, last year was five hundred fifty thousand dollars. We're keeping it at five fifty for a zero percent. Once again, this five fifty is a savings fund for the wastewater treatment plant, which is user fee-driven. It's uh, no, no uh, no bearing on the tax rate.
You were just showing that we're going to spend one point three million out of that fund, correct, this coming year.
Yeah, and we had like one, around one point two, so this is trying to help replenish that fund. For future CIP projects that we have. And that's the other thing, these deposits are based on future CIP projects that get approved in the town council. Next year, Robert and I are going to change it a little bit. We're going to be a little bit earlier in the year, so we're not doing it in November and December. Um, but those projects have come before the council as well. So this is matching what you're seeing in this capital improvement plan versus deposits.
And the capital improvement plan is a five-year plan, so we're looking out as to where we need to be in order to figure out what kinds of monies we expect to expend each year and the next five years and then being able to plan for that.
That is correct, and that's how we do these savings accounts so that we don't get that, what I call the EKG tax rate.
So we'll open the public hearing for capital reserve deposits into wastewater. Thank you, Justin. Uh, I'm opening the public hearing for capital reserve deposits in wastewater at eight eleven. If you'd like to address council, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing at eight twelve.
So, Chairman, I move five hundred and fifty thousand.
Chairman, I move five hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, to the wastewater capital reserve fund for the town warrant.
Second.
Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. No further discussion on the motion. I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose or abstain? Seven zero zero.
Want to go back?
All right, Paul.
Once again, anytime I can say this, I will say this. casts its dates. Deliberate session is March thirteenth, two thousand twenty four. Open to the public. Come on out. If you have questions about what you heard tonight, you can ask your questions there. Um, and then annual voting day is April ninth, two thousand twenty four. We will be putting together our um, books, mailing out our books as we have done in the past to all residences, probably around April first or March thirty first in that timeframe. Um, with an explanation of everything that's going on as well in the warrant, when the warrant is finalized later tonight. Um, and after deliberative session. So. Come out. All this stuff will be put on the website, the finance website in the next couple of days. Give me a little bit of time with that, please, but we'll get it up as soon as possible.
Okay. How are we doing the athletic uh, fields?
That I, I'm my part of the presentation.
Is anybody here for?
Yes, John is here, and I see that Rick Greenier is in the audience as well, as well as Holly is the treasurer. I am sorry, I do not know the other members of the executive board and I know those three.
Yeah. Are you also with um, department managers or?
Unless they want to stay.
Unless they want to stick around.
Thank you for coming.
Hey, thanks for everything you do.
You don't have to feel like you have to sneak out. You can make noise.
Oh, I didn't see him over here.
Hello again.
Hey.
Good evening again. You're on your own?
What's that?
You're on your own?
I guess so. They, they'll speak in the microphone when appropriate.
She's, you're getting moral support. Hold on.
So as you can see, we've had some conversations with the uh, uh, through Paul to the D P W and Dawn has put together her updated um, chart on what the field, proposed field would look like on Pearson Road. Part of the green, greenfield farms uh, property. And it looks like, it looks like a soccer field, soccer slash football field, and a softball field can fit in that space along with a parking lot. So of course our warrant article is proposing monies to uh, to develop that land into what you see there. And uh, the latest estimate came out to just under a million dollars. Um, per Dawn's uh, latest email that she sent us. So it looks like our, the estimate is correct. It looks like the land works. And uh, that's what we would like to put forward to the town. Couple of comments that I could make on, I, I was looking up, I was researching the two thousand ten field use uh, report that was done fourteen years ago now. And uh, they proposed, I don't know, something like twenty fields over the last fifteen years. And to date, none of them have been built. So the fields we had in two thousand ten are the fields we have currently. Um, so we think it's not out of the question that, that we, you uh, put this field forward as a more of a premier place to play than the uh, town, uh, the corporate donated fields that we spoke about. Um, Elbit and Kattingay. And uh, so I don't, that, that's really, I don't have much more to say there.
Well, this, this is something, your, your point is taken that we talked about this and years ago and, and nothing has materialized for a multitude of reasons, not least of which the struggle to balance everything, but um, I'm, I'm, I'm equally concerned about these um, large parcels that we have been allowed to use by these businesses that have been great neighbors, um, but understand, you know, what the reality of life is when it comes to those types of properties. My difficulty is in throwing my support to the number because I, I normally would rather do this in a more balanced way with, you know, we put time into it to really put the good thought. I would, I, part of me wants to support it tonight, just not because I think this is necessarily the best path for us as a, for me as a counselor, but to help support your cause and let the people have an opportunity. I'm afraid with, in voting no, like it happened with the drainage, it's people pay attention to that. And so my, my, whatever I'm going to do, it's, I support the concept. I believe we do need the fields. There's no doubt in my mind about that. But that's, that's the tear, the rub for me, I guess.
So what you're referring to is this council has to make a decision whether we support or recommend. Is that correct, Paul?
Um, since this is a petition warrant article, and since it's a money warrant article, it actually goes on the warrant.
Correct.
So right now, the council has to make the motion to move it to the warrant.
Correct.
And then when you review the warrant, that's when you can put your recommendation on it.
And we're required to do that.
And you are required by the state to do that. Um, so really this is a chance for um, the M Y A once again to get in front of the public and explain the need for the field and the cost of it. Um, and to hear the council um, views on it, but it technically has to get moved to the warrant because it's a petition warrant article. That's money related.
Right. So I, I have a few words, but I'm wondering, should I wait till after the motion before the recommendation or does it matter?
Yeah, the recommendation's coming at the.
The recommendation comes when we review the town warrant at the end of the night.
At the end.
So honestly, it, you can make them twice.
No.
This is a public hearing, so it's an opportunity for them to present to the public and the public to ask questions. I think it'd be more appropriate that way.
Yep.
And save your comments.
Till later. That's what I'm asking for advice. Thank you.
And so um, then I, I will open the public hearing at eight nineteen. If anybody would like to speak to this um, petitioned article, feel free to step to the mic. Seeing now one, yeah, if you have anything to say, please.
You know, it's intimidating.
Hi, I'm Katie Schwartz. I'm the soccer director here for M Y A in Merrimack. And I've been with soccer for the past six or seven years. And I coach in both the travel and rec areas. So we have a lot of other people coming from other towns to use our fields. And what we have now isn't necessarily safe or effective for how many players that we have and hosting other towns as well, where we have more than six hundred players for each fall and spring, which has consistently been going up. And our parking situations at Tordowski and some of the rented fields aren't really appropriate and safe. So just another one of the things to consider with this areas that we'd be making a little safer for a lot of the players in town.
Thank you very much.
Nine Maidstone Drive.
Yep. I, thank you. Thank you very much. Say, if anybody further would like to address the council?
Uh, so I, I would like to address the council. So you saw just before that the capital reserve fund. Five thousand dollars for athletic fields. That doesn't do anything. It certainly doesn't build a new field. And it, you know, probably just barely covers general maintenance. That's what we have seen over the years that we've been continually asking for more field space. And not so much to increase the numbers, but to make it better places to play for safety. And again, the risk of the um, privately owned, the donated fields uh, potentially disappearing. So you know, it's a substantial amount of money. Ten years ago in that report, they were talking three hundred thousand dollars to build a field. Now it's upwards of a million or so. And uh, you know, it's kind of interesting. I read a report from two thousand ten and they say, yeah, a million dollars will get you eight new, eight or nine new fields. And so, well, okay, maybe. But uh, uh, not, not so much. Uh, someone handed me a sheet of paper. I believe Rick Grinier put this together. Uh, that the gra- the population of the town is growing. As you know, all the apartments and new single family homes and lots. Uh, one hundred and sixty seven single family lots, one thousand and seventy one multifamily lots. Uh, estimated number of school age children going up an average of three hundred, which clearly means that our M Y A program is most likely going to grow. Okay. Over the last five, six years, we definitely had a little bit of a downswing, no doubt about it. But when you think about the future, you, you see the town growing a little bit. You, you, you think the numbers are going to start going up, and they have been over the last two or three years. It's mainly because of the excellent job I've been doing. Our program directors and our program volunteers have been doing an excellent job generating interest and excitement. The kids are starting to come back and play. Um, and of course, as Katie mentioned, the biggest complaint is we have other towns come to Elbit Field and, you know, they're like, what, what is this? The field's not even flat and it's all dirt. And they go to the, they go to other towns and they have these beautiful fields, some of them even astroturf. Personally, I think it's a little bit embarrassing that we don't have premier places to play for our, for our kids to play on. So that's my general comment.
Excellent. Any further comments? Seeing now, I'll close the public hearing at eight twenty three. Nancy?
Would like to make a motion?
Please, yes.
I move uh, to Pearson Road Athletic Field to the town warrant.
Second. Clarification. Should that be your moving the petition to the warrant? Cause that's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it needs to say that.
So you're saying the athletic field petition warrant?
Warrant article to the town warrant.
Pearson Field Petition.
Cause that will clear up any resulting, if people are confused about how it generated, where it came from, that type of thing.
So I would have to, to move Pearson Road Athletic Field Petition Warrant Article to the warrant.
Perfect.
Second.
So I don't have to say Nancy differentiate. I'll use Barbara as, motion by Nancy Murphy, second by Barbara. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. Very good. So we'll see at the deliberative session, I imagine. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the two thousand twenty four milfoil grant funds for Horseshoe Pond and Natticoop Lake. Hearing is to authorize the acceptance and expenditure of up to fifty two thousand, one hundred and forty six dollars for the milfoil treatment program at Horseshoe Pond and Natticoop Lake, of which twenty six thousand, seventy three dollars is from a grant from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for a milfoil control. And the town's a matching share of twenty six thousand, seventy three dollars to be funded from the milfoil expendable capital reserve fund pursuant to R C A thirty one colon ninety five D in Charter Article Eight, Section fifteen. How are you doing?
I'm good, Mr. Chair. How are you?
I'm well.
Everybody else, how are you? Uh, this is our annual request to spend money out of the capital reserve fund to treat milfoil in Natticoop Lake and uh, Horseshoe Pond. This year, the total cost is fifty two thousand, one hundred and forty six dollars. The majority of that going toward an herbicide treatment needed again at uh, Horseshoe Pond. Fifty fifty grant split this year with the state, so the town's cost would be twenty six thousand and seventy three dollars.
Very good. Do you have any questions?
Do we have that kind of fund?
Yes. Yeah.
Putting E K in.
Yeah, thank you.
We um, we have estimated funds in there uh, with the ten thousand dollars of about twenty eight thousand dollars.
Is this an annual amount that we're putting in or is this every couple of years that we're doing this?
No point.
Dash treatment.
These, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what's going in the capital reserves, but we, we do varying degrees of whatever the cost is for we're treating the milfoil based on what the state determines is the appropriate treatment measure. This year's a little higher because they've determined that herbicides needed on, on uh, Horseshoe Pond. But you don't, you don't happen to remember what it was last year? Uh, I don't have that in front of me, but I'm sure it was lesser than this. Um, I think it was probably in the nature of seventeen, if I remember right, but don't quote me on that. Again.
They did suction last year.
Yeah, it was just.
They did the suction, the dive.
The diving.
The diver, the diver. And this time that, because they're using herbicides, it's a little bit more money.
Yep.
But yeah, you last couple, a couple of years ago, we did herbicide at uh, Horseshoe Pond, I believe. Um, last year, I think it was just the dive. And the, the individuals at Natticoop Lake are diligent. And really that dead diving because they're out there and they're marking the milfoil, they get a lot accomplished on Natticoop Lake. Um, there were some individuals at Horseshoe Pond that wanted to step up and start doing some of that as well. But I think because we're not doing the dash or the dive this year, um, we're just doing the herbicide treatment um, over there. And that's, it's going to become a problem because this Horseshoe Pond has been a problem for, this is how it started really was Horseshoe Pond. I remember the first, first part of the grant that we ever got from the state for milfoil was for a herbicide treatment at Horseshoe Pond. And this has been like three or four herbicide treatments at Horseshoe Pond. So the milfoil at Horseshoe Pond is significant.
And when we first got some of these grants, the state paid a lot more than they're paying now. So we're, we're down at fifty percent, assuming we're at fifty percent next year. I'm wondering if we'll have any money left in that account. Or if we need to consider adding more.
We'll have to look at because cost going up, but depending what they're doing is, is adding to that.
Funding it in the budget or something, whatever.
And actually the state is fifty percent is high. They were, they went down as low as thirty percent match where they would pay thirty percent and we've had to pay seventy.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. So they're, they're increasing this up again, thanks to the state legislatures giving them more money to the fifty, fifty, but that just tells you what the milfoil problem throughout the state of New Hampshire is.
Yeah. Okay. Any further? All right, I'll open the public hearing at eight twenty nine. If you'd like to address council about the milfoil grants, step to the mic. Seeing now, I'll close the public hearing at eight thirty. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, that the town council accept and authorize the expenditure of up to fifty two thousand, one hundred and forty six dollars for the, for the milfoil treatment program at Horseshoe Pond. And, and at, oh, and at the Natticoop Lake. And uh, authorize a town, authorize the town manager to sign an ex- what? Uh, authorize the town manager to sign any and all documentation pertaining to that.
Did you need it broken out? What part will be covered by grant or is that all good?
I think a friendly amendment to this would be just to add that the uh, it's a fifty fifty match with the town paying twenty six oh seventy three and the state paying twenty six oh seventy three.
Friendly amendment?
And I'll move that.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Motion by Mackenzie, second by Nancy Harrington. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. Excellent. Thanks, Robert. And the last public hearing for the evening is the Town of Merrimack Community Choice Aggregation Plan. Councils to hear, uh, it's holding the hearing to present information and receive comments about the proposed Town of Merrimack Community Choice Aggregation Plan prepared by the Community Choice Aggregation Committee. At the hearings, the town's energy consultant, Colonial Power Group, and members of the committee are here to present plan, program, and answer questions and take public comments. Good evening. Welcome back.
Good evening. Thank you.
So this is the second public hearing on the plan. Uh, state law requires at least two public hearings. State law requires at least two public hearings. This is the second public hearing that we are having on this to receive comment and questions. I just want to tell the town council, I had zero emails. So I don't know if anybody emailed the town council directly, but nobody emailed me with questions or comments about the plan.
Must be a fabulous plan.
Yeah.
I want to take a quick, a quick moment just to say that when we formed this committee, Andy and myself were appointed as members of the town council. Paul McCauley was appointed as a member of the town staff. And we also had Representative Wendy Thomas and Representative Janine Nader as members of our five-member staff that, our committee to look into and finalize this community choice aggregation program that's being put forward. And Stuart's going to help us with explaining it for the public. But we did talk about it last week at our meeting, extensively answered any questions that came up, and would be happy to answer any more questions. But I have not received any other comments either, so. Thank you.
I think the presentation is on, is it is?
Yep.
Thank you. I, I think maybe, given that we covered this extensively a week ago, I do obviously want to cover the highlights of the program, but maybe I'll attempt a slightly faster pace, but certainly slow me down if I'm going too quickly, please. There you go. So brief introduction to community choice aggregation. So this is a program that Merrimack is considering for its town. And this is enabled through statutory language, which allows a community such as Merrimack to serve as, to form a buying group on behalf of residents and businesses who are currently taking power supply from Eversource. So an important distinction here is that a program such as this does not, is not designed, does not want to interfere in individual choice. Customers who, who prefer to make their own decisions around electric power supply. A number of customers have been doing that for a number of years, they like that. This does not interfere with that customer choice. This is really designed to provide an alternative to the electricity power supply that's provided by Eversource. Just as a little bit of a background, the manner in which Eversource procures its power supply, they follow a rather rigid process that's given to them by the State Utility Commission, whereby they are buying power supply every six months on a, on a schedule. This is a service that they're required to provide, it's not really part of their core business, but it's, it's a necessary thing that they do. So the, the benefits just in, in, in sort of broad brushstrokes of a program such as this, by banding together again, customers within the town, you can form a buying group and be much more strategic in terms of how you go about buying the power supply for those customers, as opposed to just an every-six-month process. The, I'll just step through some benefits of community choice aggregation. Again, this offers a, a choice, an alternative to electric utility default rates. Oftentimes, the, the, the objectives of a program like this include price stability. One thing that is sort of inherent in the every-six-month approach of the utility is that from time to time, you end up in terrific price volatility. The EKG effect is a good analogy. That's something that the consumers here in Merrimack have sort of suffered through recently with extremely high prices that, that you experienced over the last year and a half. So with, with a more managed, more strategic process, you can sort of stabilize prices over a stretch of time. Lots of optionality in this program, so customers can come and go in and out of the program. You're not locked in. Customers can come into the program without any fee, they can exit the program without any fee. Oftentimes, products are, are, are created that provide options for customers. You might have a product that focuses on the lowest price possible, and maybe one or two other products that might have a larger amount of renewable content, including up to a hundred percent renewable. Oftentimes, customers in town like to have those types of options. A program like this is entirely self-funded. So for, for individuals within the town who much prefer to do their own shopping or much prefer to stay with Eversource, that's their option. There are no fees would be imposed on those customers. So any cost to administer the program are built into the program rate, and so only those consumers who are participating in the program would be, be paying, would be paying those support costs. This, you know, programs like this are designed to some extent, again, as an alternative to contracting directly with electric power suppliers. Again, it's certainly possible to do very well in that market, but that market is challenging. If, if you become a little unattentive and allow, sort of forget that you're with a third-party supplier, oftentimes what happens is that supplier will continue to serve you and they'll decide what rate they're going to charge you. So you have to be careful, and again, this provides an alternative to that market. Important to point out is that Eversource very much continues to play a critical role in terms of your power delivery. So they will continue to maintain the wires. They will deliver your power. If the lights go out, they are the entity who will turn your lights back on for you. So any, if your power goes out, you'll continue to contact Eversource for those services. Billing will continue to be through Eversource. So what happens is if you were to participate in this program, the only thing that's going to change on your Eversource bill was a single line item. So instead of it saying default power supply for, for X cents per kilowatt hour, it's now the program for Y cents per kilowatt hour. Are savings guaranteed under this program? No, I cannot, I nor anyone else can guarantee savings. But, but the goal here, again, is over the life of the program, over the term of a given power supply contract, we are certainly seeking to provide a value in, in terms of lower prices than what you would have received through the utility default service. A couple of things I want to point out here, net metering consumers. Here we're talking about customers who may have, for example, rooftop solar. Those customers are certainly invited to join the program. It's probably going to require more of a conversation with those individual consumers. And I say that because a program like this cannot match the type of credit that Eversource is able to provide to those customers currently. So customers, perhaps from time to time, find they have some excess generation from their solar output in excess of what they're consuming in their resident. The way it's set up with Eversource is Eversource will give you a credit for that excess generation. And for details I won't get into, but a supplier serving a consumer choice aggregation program is not in a position to provide that same kind of credit to you. So that's something that, over the long term, we hope to get corrected. There is a docket open that we're participating in with Utility Commission. Utilities are trying to come up with some workarounds to that, but that's down the road. Staying informed, obviously, once the program is up and running, if the town chooses to move forward with this, critical in making sure that information is easily accessible for all residents in the town. So there'd be a dedicated program website to provide all the latest information on product options and prices at, at the website. Easy opportunity to opt into the program or, or out of the program. Obviously, the, the town itself would probably have information on its own town website with links to the dedicated program website. As we touched on, this is the second of two required public hearings. Just to sort of step through a little bit of, of how we got here real quickly. So the, the council, back in November, voted to form an aggregation committee. Our company has been working with the aggregation committee to create a plan. The plan just sort of creates the, or defines the structure under which a program like this would operate. The, the, the opportunity here through the public hearings is to get feedback on that plan. And if, if folks, including the council, are comfortable with the plan, it would then move forward to town meeting and provide the voters an opportunity whether or not they want to adopt that plan, which just merely provides the opportunity for the town to move forward with this. If approved at town meeting, then the plan has to be filed with the State Utility Commission for review and approval. Their process is, is pretty well tested currently, takes them a couple of months to do. Once that plan is approved, then the program can go out to market. Important to point out is that the program would not launch unless and until we can get pricing from suppliers to present to the town that beat utility default service rates. This program would not launch unless we can offer something of, of, of a lower price than the utility offering at that time. This is a, and I guess to wrap things up here, the, the way that the power supply is procured, it's a, it's a competitive process. We'd be working on behalf of the town to, to collect competitive bids from suppliers who are experienced in sorting these types of programs. We've got quite a bit of experience in Massachusetts in, in managing programs such as this. Have a stable suppliers who likewise have lots of experience and understand how these programs operate and, and are very effective in, in providing good and valuable service. I think that's it, that's, that's my race through the presentation. One, a couple of follow-up items in our, in our get-together last week. We had a couple of questions, and I just wanted to provide some follow-up if. Oh, I lost it on my email, so let me do this, I apologize, do this by memory a little bit, so I don't take too much time on it, but we had a couple of questions. One was questions from the public about the performance of aggregation programs that our company has managed down in Massachusetts. I forwarded some information to, to Paul earlier in the week. We manage currently about ninety programs in Massachusetts. And, and in the summary spreadsheet that I forwarded, it shows by each community, going back to when those programs first launched, what were their net savings or loss, losses to date. Every single program has seen net savings in their programs, over their entire lifetime of the programs. And in aggregate, it came up to, I think, just shy of about five hundred million dollars. Now, important to note, I will note, and I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but one of our clients in Massachusetts is the city of Boston. Obviously, Boston itself is quite large, so it, that, that's a big portion of that half a million dollars. Another question that came up, there's questions raised about any, any of the programs we manage who may have, have terminated early and, and what were the reasons for that? So there, there were six communities in Massachusetts that we managed that, that temporarily suspended their programs. And they're listed in, in the handout that I, or the information I forwarded to Paul. And the reason they, they suspended it had to do with sort of a, a unique situation in Massachusetts that, that isn't present in New Hampshire. And it has to do with, I C in New England recognizes three different load zones within the state. And so there's what's called locational pricing. So the cost to serve a community in Western Mass may be different in, to, to, to serve a town on the Cape. But the way the state procures its default service rates, they socialize it. They have a single rate sort of statewide or within a particular utility service territory. So anytime you might have wide disparities locally, there can be times in Massachusetts where a program just simply can't beat the utility's rate because they're, they have to price based on locational pricing, whereas the state socializes it. And that was a situation for those six or seven communities. There was just no way to beat the utility rate. Made sense, no sense for the community to sort of keep a program operating during that stretch of time. So they suspended. We're now in the process of getting those programs up and running again now that prices have sort of stabilized across the locational areas of Massachusetts.
So I found the email. And there were seven communities that suspended. Only one, Burlington, has not restarted the program. So.
And, and Burlington is in the process of restarting.
So, and then I did see, I found, I found the email, I will forward it to the town council if they wish. I'll put it up on our website here with the savings, and there are some significant savings for some of these communities. I don't see many losses. So, city of Boston, I'm trying to find the city of Boston. Yeah, Boston was two-thirds of almost half the savings. So of, of everything that was saved, and it's quite a bit of money. So.
And I think it's important to point out that, that there are several communities in New Hampshire that are in this program already, this kind of an aggregation program already. This is an opt-out program, so the town would be voting on whether they want to go in as a town, a community to get into this program, and we need a, a majority vote on the warrant to do that. And there have been some discussion about, some towns have, are actually behind the eight ball right now. And if you notice, P S and H recently, or Eversource, recently lowered their rate significantly, which probably caught some of those contracts that might have been established last year or the year before, just slightly on the high side, whereas six months ago, they were way on the low side of the Eversource rate. And so that's part of what this whole program is going to do, is look at balancing that out over a longer period so that the average is certainly lower than the default rate from Eversource. By going out to bid on a periodic basis and locking in a rate, we hope to be able to improve that. But if we can't improve it, we won't. I mean, we don't need, we don't have to go out and get our own contract if the Eversource rate is better than anything that can be offered, as you pointed out, Stuart. And so I think it's important for people to understand, this is an opportunity for the community to go in as a, as a group in order to try and get a better bulk rate than each of us individually trying to go out. And just to let people know, I currently am buying my power from a different company than Eversource. And right now, I'm high compared to whatever Source's rate is. And so I, I think that I will transfer from that into this program if the town supports it. But I, so I'm well aware of the fact that you can buy your power from a third-party vendor and yet not worry about if the lines get ripped off your house in a snowstorm or if for whatever reason the power goes out, Eversource does come out, they do take care of it. You do get a bill from Eversource, you don't ever have to deal with that third-party vendor directly. That's all handled by Eversource. And if, in this program, if you have any issues to deal with your third-party vendor, you can deal with either CPG or whoever the town's contracted with in order to get some help in opting in or opting out of the program going forward. So there's, there's a lot of flexibility for the community and a, and a distinct opportunity to save, but not a guarantee to save. That would certainly be the public interest to make it that we get a better rate. And it helps, I think, if we have a public entity looking at this for us as a, as a group, rather than me as an individual looking at it and trying to keep up month to month with what's the best rate. It'll be a lot easier for all of us to, to benefit from those programs. But thank you very much for your, for your review, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
No, if, if Janine or Wendy or Andy have any other comments they'd like to make.
The only quick comment I, I would say is, Stuart, I really appreciate you being willing to share the performance of, of your, your company. It makes me feel better knowing that you guys have been successful in Massachusetts, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Either, you can sit here if you want.
Wendy Thomas, State Rep for Merrimack. Three points. One is that I also did not get any emails this week. I got quite a few last time, but none this week, so that was interesting. My second point is that I wrote down a lot of topics from last week's meeting. And I would suggest that the aggregation committee that we have in town with, with you and, and Tom and, and Janine, that, that we meet to go over some of these issues, that we don't just stop meeting. And that even once we have a solution picked, that we have some sort of a committee that oversees it, that's ongoing. It doesn't have to be the same people, but I, I, there should be some sort of an entity that does oversight on this, ongoing. And then my third. Um, and then my third point was, um, if you could also send the emails to, um, Janine and myself as well, that would be appreciated. That's it for this time. Oh, there you go. You're good.
That's fast.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Wendy.
And I must say, I, I appreciate Janine Nodder and Wendy Thomas putting forth a little extra time to join us for quite a few, um, meetings that we had to try and get this in there. Um, there has been some discussion about, we're trying to rush this. Um, we had our meeting in November to put this committee together to move this forward, but we've been talking about this for over a year now. Uh, we've had presentations in the past, um, to try and put this together. And my fear is that because this has to go before the town warrant or acceptance by the town, we'd be waiting, if we didn't move this now, we'd be waiting yet another year. Uh, and we're already in a crunch, as you can see through the budget on expenses and things of that nature. So any, anytime I feel like we have a chance to, to potentially save money in our bills, uh, it's a good opportunity for us to take it forward. And so thanks very much to Janine and Wendy and Andy and Paul for your extra time and Stuart for your time, um, to get us together to put this program. We've made some, some nice tweaks and adjustments to the program to make it, I think, clearer and easier to understand. And it is available on the website, um, so, and we'll post additional information on the website. Uh, that's been talked about this evening and, and was talked about in the last meeting. Um, just so that people can start to familiarize themselves and understand it. We'll be talking again at the deliberative session about it, I'm sure, because it'll be hopefully on the warrant if the town council's moving it there. Um, and encourage everybody to get involved and understand as much as they can to come out and vote for it. Thank you.
Excellent.
I think I did.
I don't recall.
Then I'll open it right now at eight fifty-three. Um, I didn't do that. And I don't recall, so. All right, if anybody further would like to address the council, feel free to step up to the mic. See, none, all right, I'll close, did I say eight fifty-three? I'm closing the public area at eight fifty-four. And, uh.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Community Choice Aggregation Plan to the town warrant.
Second.
Motion by Tom Kanning, seconded by Nancy Harrington. I, uh, like the idea, I think it would be worthwhile for the town to have the opportunity to, uh, see about it and vote on it. So. There's no further discussion? Call the question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Seven zero zero. Thanks for everything, Stuart, Wendy, Janine, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Thomas and Andy, appreciate that effort.
You knew Wendy, thank you.
Are you gonna be making that pitch, Tom, at town meeting?
As necessary is.
All right. Legislative updates, if any of our legislators would like to, as the council, feel free to have a seat or step up to the mic. Hi, Wendy.
Uh, Wendy Thomas, State Rep again. Uh, so we had session today.
Wendy?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, um, we had session today and, um, we sent a bunch of bills over to the Senate, which is, which is our job. Um, we were able to stop some of the voucher bills and again, um, the significant thing about the voucher bills is we have no idea how much they're gonna come in at. Um, so, um, it would just, it's just not fiscally responsible. Um, but the, the two things that I wanted to bring to your attention this week, um, I, I mentioned it last week was, um, uh, House Resolution twenty-eight, which was asking for oversight, um, just eyes on the closure of St. Cobain. Because we don't have confidence, we being the legislator, la- legislatures that have spoken with D E S, we don't have confidence that D E S is doing the job that they should be doing. Um, and so, um, this, it was passed, um, today on the consent calendar. Um, and it goes to, the letter is going to President Biden, our congressional delegate, get, delegation, um, the Fed DOJ, N H DOJ, um, EPA. And St. Cobain got wind of, of this, um, and so they sent a letter to the legislature, um, outlining what marvelous neighbors they are and how much they have done for the town. And if you look at the letter, and I sent it to Paul, and, um, you can probably share it, and if you want me to send it to you, I certainly will. Um, they talk about what they have done, um, and they stress on page one that they have, um, every intention of delivering on the obligations in the consent decree. We've always pushed back on that because that was done in two thousand eighteen before we even knew, they knew that these chemicals were dangerous and bad. We didn't know. And since that consent decree, we have found that it has crept all throughout, uh, Southern New Hampshire. So they have declared right on page one that they're only interested in, in fixing the consent decree, which is going to be a problem. Um, they also talk about the water delivery, the, the, um, the, and, and they are, they're delivering water to seven hundred, uh, families. Um, and they're going to, they say they're going to hook up. Um, they're gonna be out of town before they actually do the hookup, so that is a concern. Um, and they are talking about the poet rebate. So the, this letter is about how much they have done for the town, the people who, the town residents with regard to water. There's nothing in this letter that indicates they have done anything to protect our health. There is nothing in this letter that has, that says there's anything they're doing to protect our soil, our air, our, our animals that have been contaminated. So they just conveniently left that all out. So, I think it's very good that this House Resolution got passed and we're gonna have eyes on this situation because we're gonna need it. They're, they're, they are not good neighbors. They say they are, but they are not. Um, the other thing that I wanted to talk to you about was, um, a bill that I presented this, uh, week in, uh, along with, um, a representative from Keene, Nick Germana. And, um, this, the idea for this bill came about when, um, D E S granted St. Cobain that air permit. We had all kinds of people submitting, you know, testimonies saying that they're sick, you know, it's, it's contaminating our town. Um, you know, they, that St. Cobain has lied because they put in that bypass, an illegal bypass, and they used it, um, when their, when their scrubbers failed. And they're very proud of the fact that they only, they only put in two pounds of this stuff into our, our town during that failure. Two pounds. I want to remind you that one drop of this stuff in a body of water that's twenty Olympic swimming pools is enough to make it too dangerous to use. And they're very happy that they only put in two pounds of this stuff into our, uh, our town. So, the, the bill that we put forward, we worked with D E S and there's a mission statement with D E S that says they have to consider the public good, but it's not written into any of the laws, so they don't do it. Which is why they didn't care about what we said about St. Cobain lying. They told us that, um, their regulatory agency, if you fill out the application correctly, you get the permit. It doesn't matter the impact to the, to the community. So, the bill that we put forward is to just take one permit, which is a landfill permit, we figured we'd start there and mandate that New Ha- that the New Hampshire D E S consider public benefit, and we define that, as well as community impact. So that's everything. That, that's in the environment, it's, uh, infrastructure, it's roads, it's odor. I mean, we have a whole list of this. So we're going to start, you know, making them accountable to us instead of to the businesses. Um, it may, it may eventually result in renaming the department because a lot of other states have a Department of Environmental Protection. We have the Department of Environmental Services. Um, it sounds like it's minor, but it's a big thing. Um, so, uh, I, this, uh, the bill was brought forward to the, uh, Environment and Ag Committee. And they're, they're on top of it. They, they want, they want to work on an amendment to pass this bill because they, 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 they see that this is missing from D E S. Um, in particular, the reps from Nashua. Because, um, I don't know if you, if you, if you, um, knew about the Asphalt, uh, Corporation that was gonna be downtown Nashua. Downtown Nashua. Um, and they were appalled because D E S again didn't stop or, you know, didn't put any brakes or guardrails on it. Uh, so, so we're gonna force D E S to, to be accountable to us and to the environment. So I, I think that, um, it's going to go forward. There was a bipartisan support on it. Um, in fact, I think, um, the entire committee is, is, uh, on board with this, which is pretty unusual these days. Um, but it's something that, that is needed and we're gonna get it done. And it's gonna help our town eventually.
Wendy, which bill was that?
I'm sorry?
The number?
You had a bill number?
H B twenty-eight?
Uh, I think it's one-one-seven-oh.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can send you the, the text if you, if you'd like to. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Janine. Good evening.
This is late for me. I'm one of those early risers, trying to get as much done before dawn as I can. Um, thank you and sorry to take up more of your time. Um, I felt, uh, uh, the need to come back this week because last week we heard some several false statements about the, um, education freedom accounts. Um, I am working right now to, to get a presentation together to explain, it's a very complex issue. But one of the things we heard was, uh, number one, voucher, it's not a voucher. It's the, um, it's a scholarship. And it's, uh, we heard that it's, um, an unfunded mandate, that is false. Um, we heard that, uh, it's gonna raise our taxes. Well, when tax money goes to the schools, okay, it's the taxpayer money goes to school, it's already there. So, uh, with the E F A, part of that money can follow the child. So I do have a chart that shows, like, say, twenty thousand dollars per student. Five thousand of that will go to the E F A program. The first year, the rest of that money, fifteen thousand, stays in the school, stays, stays with, and the student's not even there. And then it goes down each year. So, you know, you have fewer kids in the school than we're paying less taxes. So it actually comes out to a savings. Um, thirteen states have E F A programs. Um, I know some people fear that the universal education choice will cause a mass exodus from the public schools. But that's not what's happened in the other states. Uh, so the, um, the two largest school choice programs are in Florida and Arizona. In both states, a hundred percent of the students are eligible for school choice. Whereas in New Hampshire, it's a fewer than half of the students, um, are eligible for an E F A. And in, uh, Arizona, um, ten percent of Florida students, nine percent of, um, Arizona students participate, even though a hundred percent qualify. In New Hampshire, where forty-eight percent of students are eligible for E F A, is only three percent participate. The census, uh, from two thousand twenty-two, which is the most recent available, um, census, put the state's school age population at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred. How many of the students can be expected to use an E F day, E F A if all the students become eligible? Um, and then it goes on, but I really don't want to take up the time, I just felt the need that I needed to come back and say something to let you know that I'm not gonna forget this and let it just go. This is a, a very, um, it's important, you know, we should always put students over systems. And if the public school isn't working for some of the children, then why shouldn't their tax dollars that they have to pay help them? It's, they're not all gonna go to a private school, okay? There's not enough, enough room in the private schools, some will homeschool. Um, there's charter schools. Oh, and another thing I saw on, um, uh, social media is that somebody's saying, oh, but if you add in transportation, it ends up costing all this money, that costs more and, right, but if you go to public, a private school, you don't get to go on the public school bus, that's ridiculous. I don't know why that, somebody's saying that. And the charter school is a public school, so I, they may have the, the bus, not sure. But homeschoolers, they're home, they don't need a bus. So, let's do away with that argument.
Thanks, Representative Nodder. Good evening, councilors. I'm Representative Tim McHugh for Merrimack, thirty years in Merrimack, bowers landing right now. So, I wanted to give you a little update about what was going on today in the State House as well. Uh, first I'll tell you, we didn't have a single seven-zero-zero vote. I think, uh, the clip, I think we had two voice votes out of seventeen bills. So I'm very jealous of your consensus. We're a little more divided, uh, in the State House, uh, but thank you for all you do. And working until nine o'clock plus and working all day, uh, is pretty, pretty rare in the State House. Uh, but today was a long one and we had some good stuff happen and we had some bad stuff happen, so I'll tell you a little bit about each. Uh, one bill that I think we'd all be interested in is the, uh, municipal inspections on owner-occupied units, multi-dwellings. That unfortunately died, um, so it still is possible for municipalities to inspect even the owner-occupied unit of say, uh, you know, quad, quad unit. So that, that was killed, it was a close vote, one ninety-five to one eighty-two. Um, we had, we did have a big, rather unfunded mandate that could cost us five hun- fifty to a hundred million dollars. Uh, that's because we did vote, it took seven votes actually to get there and it was initially killed. This is House Bill twelve-twelve, uh, raising the co- raising the eligibility cap for school meals, for free school meals. So federal poverty for a family of three, uh, is about twenty-five thousand and change. So the current, uh, threshold is a hundred and eighty percent of poverty, so about forty-six thousand dollars to be eligible for school meals. We raised it today to three hundred and fifty percent, which is almost a hundred thousand dollars, ninety-eight, ninety-eight and change. Right? So to get eligible for free meals. So abates the parents', uh, responsibility to feed their kids, puts it fully on the schools. There is no federal reimbursement whatsoever for that, just to be clear. Um, this bill will go to fi- finance, but if it fully passes and passes the Senate, uh, that tax, that cost is passed on squarely to the taxpayers. That is a true unfunded mandate. Right? So that's something we want to be, uh, watching, that's House Bill twelve-twelve.
If I may, um, there's only thirty-eight schools that do not participate in the, um, in the meals program. So this bill, if it passes the Senate, which I don't think it will, um, will force those thirty-eight schools to, to be in the program and raise our taxes.
So two other quick education bills. Uh, there's a massive surplus in the Education Trust Fund. That, those, that's the money that could only be spent on education, right? We funded it, we funded it some more, it's about a hundred ninety-three million dollars. We had a, a bill today, fifteen sixty, that would have sent that money back to the people that originally put it there, the taxpayers. Right? The, the ETF is projected to have a consistent surplus throughout this budget year, even with transferring that money back to the general fund. So why do we want to tra- why do we want to transfer it back to the general fund? Because that allows us to spend it or send it back to the taxpayers in any fashion we see fit. Right? If it stays in the ETF, which we all agree, you know, education is important and we have to fund it, um, it is absolutely locked in there and it's already running a surplus, right? If we transferred it to the general fund, no monies that are now allocated for education will be cut. There's absolutely zero cut and no effect on education spending. This is extra money that should go to the general fund, so we have flexibility to spend it where we need it and potentially cut taxes with it. So that unfortunately, uh, is actually on, on the table, that was the biggest, uh, biggest margin today, three hundred and forty-six to seventeen. Seventeen members voted against it, it's on the table right now. So stay tuned on fifteen sixty, we'll see what happens to it. One other education bill, uh, sixteen fifty-two, would have allowed for localities, should they choose, classic New Hampshire, local control, localities to set, establish their own education freedom accounts. That actually failed unfortunately, one ninety-four to one seventy-nine. So switching gears a little bit, uh, the fire chief talked a little bit about ambulance, uh, funding and reimbursement rates and things like that. Some of you may remember, I was a volunteer on Merrimack Ambulance Rescue Service and actually even a part-time EMS employee here, uh, back in the day. Um, what, so it's an issue near and dear to my heart and I'm still a licensed paramedic, actually. Uh, we have a bill in committee in the Commerce Committee, I sit on two committees, the House Commerce and Consumer Affairs and Resources Recreation Development. Commerce is probably the busier of the two and we're dealing with this bill now that will mandate the payers, the third-party payers to direct the payments right to the EMS providers. So think about when you, you know, got a chip in your windshield and, uh, your, your dealer, your glass replacer says, do you, your insurance company says, should we send the check straight to the dealer or do you want us to send it to you? This would make it so that the payers have to send that money, that expensive ambulance bill, straight to the service provider. So that will dramatically increase, we think, our. So that will dramatically increase, we think, our reimbursement rate, which is currently around seventy-eight percent. Sometimes in Merrimack, we, we do balance bills. Sometimes we don't. Sometimes we try to collect it. There is a mechanism to apply for abatement if you can't afford your ambulance bill. So we have those things. But the important thing is for people that have insurance, that are paying premiums, we want to get that money directly. We don't want somebody putting in a new bathroom with their ambulance reimbursement check, which is a real story, by the way. So, so that'll be in Commerce. We have good progress on that. We think it'll be coming out the right way. Let's see what else. Veterans, Veterans Court. We did vote to establish a special court for veterans. These are veterans with PTSD, veterans with brain trauma, you know, head injuries, disabled veterans, that will have a special type of court access. So working with people who know and are experts at dealing with those types of folks in the court system, right? So to provide those veterans a little bit of extra services in our, in our court system. So we did, we did vote to pass that. Actually, that was another very bipartisan vote. It was one of the two that I remember today passing on a voice vote. So that should be on to the Senator to finance. Let's see, I think that may be all I had. Questions there? I mean, we had a whole bunch of bills and there's many, many more to come, but those are some of the highlights from a rather long day.
Forty-four next week.
Yeah, forty, forty-four next week, starting at nine o'clock and probably going until nine. But questions from the council on anything that's on your mind in the legislature?
Think we're good. Thanks for the update.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Nancy, did you have anything? It's a record number of legislators in one evening. Sorry.
Well, thank you. I'll just, a lot of the, the, the bills that we addressed today have already been mentioned, so I won't address them. The only one that I would add to the list was HB sixteen-ninety-six, relative to electronic record requests under the right to know law. This bill passed on a voice vote and what it does is it establishes a state repository for municipal right to know records, funds a records manager and encourages municipalities to use the repository, enhancing public record access and reducing requests. So that's a, that, you know, something hopefully that will, will benefit. Yeah, not sure how it's going to work, but that's the plan and everybody agrees, so.
Sounds like a harmonious day today.
Yes, yep. And as far as, as was mentioned prior, that, you know, the EFA votes were, you know, some things were passed and some weren't. You know, as I stated last week, the reason that I voted the way I do is, one of the concerns is that eighty percent of the, the cost of a public education is borne by the taxpayers. And the EFAs, there are no academic standards for services. There's no data collected on student outcomes, academic performance or either, even whether or not the students receive the educational services at all. So, and as far as the, the educational trust fund, keeping the funds in that, part of the purpose for that is, is right now, New Hampshire is under court order to provide more funding through the adequacy formula to local school districts. It's, it's under appeal. And then we need to keep funds in the educational trust, trust fund to ensure they're available for things like episodic placements, court ordered placements, special education and building aid. So that, that's my rationale for, for how I voted. Thank you.
Thank you Nancy. All right. Town manager report.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to bring this to everyone's attention. We just got word that there will be a public hearing on February twenty-second at six-thirty in the Matthew Thornton Room regarding the bridge replacement work done on Beale's Road. For those that don't know where Beale's Road is, that road is, Beale's Road Bridges. It's near Parkhurst Road and Woodward Road. It's the back way to get to Gage Girls Road to get to the transfer station. So that bridge is being, right now, looked at being repaired. It's, the construction cost is going to be paid one hundred percent by the state, federal government. The bridge allocated cost is that ninety percent, almost ninety-one percent of the bridge is in Bedford and nine, nine-point-two percent of the bridge is in Merrimack. We are dealing with Bedford right now, discussing how that other twenty percent breakout of the A and E costs are going to be. Since the state is ponying up eighty percent of the A and E cost, federal government's ponying up a hundred percent of the construction cost. We're trying to figure out.
Three-point-two percent.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're trying to say to them. But there's a, it's funny because we have a little corner of the bridge in Merrimack. Tiny, tiny corner, but we have a wing wall. That's in Merrimack. Wing wall is, is.
So the water flows.
Water flows. It doesn't, under, so we have a wing wall, which we would have to maintain. But then there were things in the contract like line striping. It's a foot of white paint. You know, potholes. It's a two feet on the bridge. If we have a pothole there, we have our own pothole team. We can go replace the pothole. So we're negotiating and then because of the way Parkhurst comes down into the bridge, there's a guardrail that they're putting up now.
This is where the triangle used to be.
Yes, yeah, yes. Where the old farm used to be. So Parkhurst used to be the way onto Beale's Road until Woodward got built.
Yeah.
So.
Woodward.
Woodward, Woodward. Yes, Woodward. The, it's the Bronx in me stuff. So, but we're negotiating this percentage and we're actually saying it should be less of a cost for Merrimack than what we can see. And, and we're trying, we're asking, so what are your projections for architect engineer? The twenty percent that we're gonna, is gonna have to be split between Bedford and Merrimack. And it was, I don't, we don't know. We don't have a good number yet. We're working on it. It should be fifty-fifty. Like, no, it's not fifty-fifty. We don't want the bridge. Do away with it.
What was, what was that bridge last worked on? It was.
Years ago.
Is there any record of that, how that worked?
Yeah, Bedford paid for it all.
Bedford paid for it all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So it, it got, it's so, it got so comical. It got so comical that DOT came and I sat there with them. I said, we were at, we were in Concord and I said to them, uh, they wanted, well, it's all in Merrimack, you know, it's half in Merrimack, half in Bedford. I'm like, how do you figure that? I have a granite marker that shows that the bridge, most of the bridge is in Bedford. And Dawn, and we said, get your survey team out there and do the survey. Because the granite mark, the bridge is here and the granite marker is like in the woods, buried in the woods. That's there. That's the town line marker. And they had to go all the way down. They found it and there's this little triangle piece that would be part of Merrimack. So it's.
Filling that triangle.
Yeah. But, but, so, so we're working with it, but I did want to say the reason for this is that there will be finally a public hearing because they said, oh, we don't need a public hearing. It's going to be here on the twenty-second of February, Thursday, the twenty-second.
It's a good thing we don't have a meeting.
Six P M.
We made a space for them.
Right, we made a space for them. The, the funny part was is that we're telling them it's federal money. You need to hold a public hearing.
They didn't know that.
No, really? Yeah, really. We've already been through this with our trail. You have to hold a public hearing for the, so the, you can have public input.
So you're educating them, should cover the cost of that.
Right, right. So, so I, I, I pushed this off, I've, I've given this to Dawn, this project to Dawn because she can handle it. And I went to the first meeting and when the town manager at Bedford wasn't at the first meeting, I said, if it's not important to him, it's not, it's important to me. Dawn, you handle it.
She has the.
And she has, she has, she has all my full support and she's handling and she's actually, she's the same thing like me. The numbers don't tie, guys. So, but there'll be a public hearing for the residents in that. Hopefully everybody got noticed in that area who's supposed to get noticed. If not, we're getting a copy of it and we will notice the people in Merrimack in that vicinity that this is happening as well. So that's one. The other thing that I'd like to talk to the council about is that if you haven't downloaded the Merrimack TV app in the App Store, please do. It's a great app. A lot of things. You'll get a lot of up-to-date items. It will help medias tremendously. You can get all the meetings on your app, on your phone, on your iPad, whatever. It's a great app to have. And I just want to send kudos out to the media division. It was funny, I've tried for years to get sports coverage here. I used to go to all, when I used to travel, I used to always see, you know, this high school football game, this high school basketball game, this, that. They have exceeded expectations. They've covered hockey. They've covered wrestling. They covered football. They've covered basketball. And this week, they covered a milestone in girls' basketball. An individual from the Goffstown girls' basketball team reached a thousand career points in basketball. And they were covering the game live and they were feeding it back to Goffstown. So the Goffstown residents could watch the game and the comments they got. And they did a really great job with it. And the other thing is, is that if you haven't, you, you should watch the hockey game. I think it was, I think it was Goffstown. I've never seen this in high school hockey, but a fight broke out. And our commentators were superb. They, they apologized for the foul language that parents were yelling on the ice.
Had to be Goffstown parents.
I, I have no idea where at Goffstown. It was, it was, it was, it was a swear, but it wasn't a bad one, but it was a swear all the less. And they apologized for that. And then our high school representative, our high school volunteer, actually presented about sportsmanship. And that is not how you should be acting. So if you haven't seen it, but they're, they're doing a really great job and, and I'm glad that they're doing it and they've getting great feedback from parents and coaches and you know, senior night. Why aren't you covering senior night? When is senior night? So next Tuesday, they're going to be very busy because they're covering the boys' basketball game. We have the meeting. Planning Board has a meeting. Library has a meeting. So they'll be busy, but they're still going to do the sports, so. Do want to give them kudos. They do a very good job with it.
That's, that's a fact.
But download the app.
Got it. All right. No consent agenda, no old business under new business. Councils consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation, four thousand, three hundred, twenty dollars from Merrimack Crime Line to the Merrimack Police Department for upgrades to patrol rifles for our regional special operations unit officers, which are six, pursuant to RSA thirty-one call and ninety-five B, Charter Article eight, Section fifteen. Captain Harleton.
Just give you general ideas of what I'm talking about here. Well, thank you for the opportunity to present the donation.
The other one who knows what they, Andy.
Thought it was okay there, I am. So thank you for the opportunity to present this donation. And I, so thank you. And I'd also like to thank Crime Line, Merrimack Crime Line. They've always been a huge supporter of the department over the years and have been very, very generous in helping us get equipment that we need. So here we are again. They stepped up for a need that we have. So I know probably, I don't want to jump to assumptions here, but there's probably not a lot of gun people here. So it's the reason why I passed the handout out because it's, we're basically asking to purchase half a rifle, if that makes any sense. So the rifles that our guys currently deploy, so the, the officers, we have six officers that are on the regional SWAT team and they each have a rifle that's assigned to them. So this, this proposed upgrade is going to be used on those rifles. And the rifles they have are AR fifteen, M four platforms. And so basically those rifles consist of two main parts. You have an upper and a lower receiver. It's the upper that we're looking to replace, which is that handout that I showed you. So it's the barrel assembly and all that. The reason for the upgrade is, one, some of the rifles that the guys are using are getting a little old. So we've been kind of, you know, passing these down and recycling them because we're trying to save money. So get them a newer rifle, new barrel. The other thing that is the big push here is something that's a little bit more compact and user-friendly. So the rifles that they have right now currently have sixteen-inch barrels. This is, has an eleven-and-a-half inch barrel. So it's shorter, it's lighter. It's configured in such a way that the receiver allows the attachment, easier attachment of accessories, so flashlights, sighting systems, whatever else, grips, those types of things. The price also includes the bulk carrier group. So the bulk carrier assembly and the charging handle is all part of the, 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 the fire operations of these rifles. So that, it also includes that. That's the total price. When the guy, so basically a couple of guys on the team priced these out and, you know, some of this stuff gets really expensive. This company actually, this Aero Precision, they're located in Lakewood, Washington, and they're originally started out as an aircraft part supplier. Supplied parts to Boeing in particular. So they had the tooling and they saw, they wanted to get into the firearms business. So they have the tooling especially for aluminum and so they make a very good product. It's a high-quality product, but it's not a break-the-bank thing either. Because that was the thing, you know, we're going to be doing this. Let's try and be smart about how much money we're going to spend, like we do with everything else. Make sure we also have a quality product too. You don't want to go on the cheap and, and get cheap because then you're going to end up coming before you again, asking for more guns. So the price range of stuff, the, the, some of the companies range anywhere from fourteen hundred dollars for one of these uppers to six hundred and forty. So this company came in, just the most cost advantageous for us. The Merrimack Firearms is one business in town that can actually get these for us. They've offered to do it. They offered some of the pricing, so we got the pricing through them. I looked online. You go through the company, it's a little bit more. I understand the reasoning behind that, but we can get a, a good, a good deal through Merrimack Firearms. So again, it's, it's something that the guys have been asking for since they joined the team. Most of the departments that are on this team have these, they call them short-barrelled rifles. And I think the, the main thing with that is a lot of what they do is they're indoors. They're going through hallways. They're in tight spaces. They're in rooms. Some of our guys, and they'd be the first, it'd be okay if I said this, the shorter guys, if they're getting down into a prone position or they're kneeling, the shorter rifle allows them to do it easier. They're not stuffing a barrel into the ground accidentally or they're banging it off with things. So it's a lot easier for them to maneuver around. And so anyways, that's, that's kind of the pitch. That's what we were looking to do and that's the reasoning behind it. So if you have any questions, be happy to try and answer them.
Thanks, Captain. Anybody have any questions?
I'm looking at Andy. He, he knows that, what question he's asking.
It's a mid, mid-line manufacturer. I guess the only question I would have, I think a couple of years ago, we replaced a couple of the ARs in some of the patrol. This would be a different manufacturer than what we went with when we replaced those patrol ARs.
We've actually, yeah, we've had a few. So the last, I think the last big purchase was the ten suppressed rifles for the cruisers.
Yeah.
So, and we, we, and that was, that was great that we could get those. The big push behind those was, so the SWAT guys, so the guys that are on this unit, they have what's called Ear Pro. So it's hearing protection. So a lot of the guys on that team don't necessarily have to have suppressed rifles. The big push for us with the suppressed rifles was that those are in the patrol cars and if a guy has to go to an active shooter event, he doesn't have Ear Pro. He's basically grabbing his gear. He's grabbing his gun. He's running into a building. So you, you know, hearing protection was a huge thing, which is the big push behind those. That was the big push. Over the years, we've kind of tried to piecemeal it, two or three rifles at a whack. So again, this is just for these guys. And some of those rifles that we had have been cycled to the guys that are on this team right now. So that's the push to, to go with this. The other thing too, that I want to make you aware of is that the, again, this is kind of, I'm getting into the gun nerd territory here, but the lower receivers that we're going to be putting these uppers on, they're registered short-barreled receivers. So that's their, that's registered through the government. Anything less than sixteen inches has to be a registered, it's like class three firearm basically. So we're not, we're not mixing and matching uppers and lowers that don't belong together.
Didn't you say what they currently have is a sixteen-inch barrel?
Well, some, yes, some of the ones that, yes, some of the ones are sixteen-inch. There are some that have fourteen-and-a-half inch barrels.
Okay.
So we are going to be keeping those. So the barrel assemblies that we're replacing, we're not getting rid of them. We're saving them, but we're going to be changing them out.
But the receivers that have. But the receivers that have sixteen inch barrels, do you have to then convert those to SBRs and get a class?
We don't.
Why do you have to do it on some and not the others?
That was some, I really, I'm not quite sure what the reasoning is behind it, but I did talk with, um, the Merrimack Firearms, and we should be good to go with that, and I think it might have to do with the fact that we're law enforcement, I think it's a law enforcement or military thing. So that's my understanding of it.
I mean, I, I get the need for to do, uh, CQB, you'd want the shorter barrel, makes sense to me.
Don't I trust you in these judgments?
I, I just want to follow up on a couple of things you said, you said the rifles they have are getting old. How long do we expect these rifles to last? I don't, I don't, I've never used one enough to wear one out.
Yeah, well, so every year, so the, the, these guys in particular on the team, they go to trainings twice a month. Now, not all of their training involves shooting, but some of it does. So these rifles are assigned to these guys, so you have that added training that they're doing with the team twice a month. And then you have the training that we do once a year as a department for use-of-force training. So the rifles, these specific rifles are seeing more rounds than the ones that are in our patrol cars. Because these guys are training with them on a more frequent basis, and they're not shooting the rifles every time they go to training. But, because sometimes they'll do a day of pistols, sometimes do a day of rifles, sometimes they don't do any shooting. Sometimes it's all, uh, training that's related to building clearing and, and, uh, in woodland searches and stuff like that. But they are seeing more rounds, round counts, and because some of them have been recycled, because we, we are, I know I see, see me every time I come in front of you guys, I'm asking for guns. But we do recycle these, because I feel like every time I'm coming here, I'm asking about guns. But we do, we do, we, we try and be good about it, it's like our cars, you know, we, the same thing, like I'm, I'm driving a cruiser that's, uh, twenty fifteen right now, it's got a hundred and, I don't know how many miles on it. We try and recycle as best we can, and some of these rifles that the team members have, the uppers, some of them are not as old, but we have a mix. But some of them are, have seen a lot of rounds go through them. So we're trying to make sure that they have the right equipment and the best equipment, and that's kind of the push behind this. Aside from it being more user-friendly, if that makes any sense.
So I guess I, I'm just trying to wonder what, what wears out, you're saying you run extra rounds, are we talking hundreds a year or thousands of rounds a year, or? I would imagine these rifles can take thousands of rounds.
They can, they can, but you know, typically we see the wear, you start to see the wear in the barrel, you start to see the wear in the bolt carrier group, and that's all a part of this upper receiver. So that stuff does wear after a while, it does.
All right, so I guess that answers the question basically of how often it's fired. This is a, you're getting a donation of money from Crime Line to, to pay for this?
Correct, yeah.
So we're not actually looking to expend any more money out of our budget?
No, and that's why we really appreciate it, because this is not, this is, this is, this is this organization that's donating the money to us.
One other question, you, you talked about being inside buildings and whatnot, and I've always thought of rifles as being out in the open where you have, uh, an ability to maneuver it, but in a building or hallway or something like that, you'd have trouble moving a rifle around, that's where pistols come in really nice. Are we using short-barrel rifles in close quarters and things like that?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Bringing it up to aim and stuff like that.
No, it's, it's, and to be quite honest, most of your, so most of your active shooters, not, not all, but most, right? Are typically, they're carrying a long gun. And most of the time when we respond to an active shooter, we have our rifles. And honestly, it, it, we have them because it provides us the best advantage when we're engaging somebody like that. Because typically they'll have that type of weaponry, sometimes they have better weaponry than we do, but most of the time, it gives us that advantage. Uh, we have our pistol as our backup, but if we go to a, a, a serious incident like that, the rifle is typically the first weapon that we have when we deploy. It's more accurate, uh, it's easier to shoot, it has a higher round count. You know, it, it's just, it's, it's better, it's just, it just is better than a pistol. Let's say we can't do the same thing with a pistol, sometimes that's all you have, you run into a building with a pistol, it's all you have, it's all you have, it is what it is. But the rifle gives you that added advantage, so a lot of that active shooter, close-quarter stuff is rifle first, pistol second.
Okay, I, I probably am thinking about movies and things of that nature, which is probably not practical for what your real life is. I always see the rifle as being more complicated timing-wise to get up and aimed in the right direction, uh, with accuracy, whereas pistols are an extension of the arm and can, can be fired relatively quickly, I would think faster than a rifle, but it.
Andy's going, no.
I mean, when, when you think about it, if you're holding something with eleven inch barrel, right, you're much more accurate than you are with a pistol, right? Pistols only got, you know, a four-inch.
Pulling a trigger.
Right, and so when you're pointing that bullet somewhere, that eleven inches gives you a much more accurate picture. If you watch any of the, not the movies, right, but the, the SWAT teams or, or the SEAL teams or anything, they're all using SBRs going into the buildings. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
So I'd like to, if we're ready, let's make a motion, uh, to accept and expand the donation of four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, from Merrimack Crime Line to the Merrimack Police Department for upgrades patrol rifles for our regional special operation unit officers, pursuant to RSA three to one colon ninety-five dash B and Charter Article eight dash fifteen.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Barbara. Would you like to further speak to your motion?
I don't think it's pretty obvious.
I think so.
You don't need to sign thing, do you, Paul?
What's that? I'm sorry?
Does he need to sign anything?
I'm not sure.
And have the ability to, an authorization to sign any documentation needed.
Barbara's good with that as well.
Just in case.
Yeah.
All right, motion's understood. Call the question, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Oppose or abstain, seven zero zero. Thanks, I called you captain earlier, I demoted you, I apologize.
I had more fun as a captain.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, take care now. It's just an old habit. All right. Number two hundred new business, council considered to consider adding the recommended amendment to Charter Article six, section one B, Conservation Commission of the Town of Merrimack Charter to the twenty twenty-four town warrant.
Uh, this was brought up in December, we moved it forward to the Secretary of State. Secretary of State got back to us. Though late, after their forty-five days, they were forty-nine days. So technically, this is the last day that we can move this charter article forward, because state law says seven days after receipt from the, um, Attorney General's Office approving it, the council has to vote on whether or not to move it forward on the warrant. So today is the last day, we got it on February eighth from the state. What we're doing is we're proposing the Charter Article Amendment. It's snowing outside, so people are. Yeah, it's getting, it's a little, it's getting a little thick and slippery. But back to our Charter Article Amendment, uh, we're, we're amending the provision in the Charter for Conservation Commission. And basically, we're adding, one student representative would be recommended by the school board and pointed to the town council. This individual is not a voting member nor a member for quorum purposes, it's to get the youth involved with conservation. And, uh, the Conservation Commission brought this forward, and because of the laws garnered in the RSA's about, uh, conservation commissions, that they can only have a total of seven voting members. We felt that this was the best way to get, uh, individuals.
It's deep enough for that, it's plowing?
It's gotta be two inches. So this is, uh, this is, uh, this is.
Sorry, Paul.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The plot track fell on, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I think this is a good idea, um, they, uh, it, it's for a multitude of reasons. Getting interest for the future as well is a big part of it, for, for my liking, but.
Yeah, a lot of good reasons.
Can I ask what this effective April one, twenty twenty-four is about, since our vote would be afterwards?
Uh, we have to make it retro back, we have to make it retro back to April first, because if we don't put a date on it, it doesn't go into effect until the next fiscal cycle. So by making it April first, will be in effect for the first of the school year, September. If not, we'd miss the whole school year and be a year out, that's why the effective date.
It has to be a retroactive date, it can't be May one?
Uh, usually, it's, we usually do effective April first to go along with assessing, because we always, if we're doing any, any like solar exemption or any exemption, we always bring it back to April first, so. Just to keep it in line, what, what we normally do, that people don't get confused why we're using September first versus, April first on a warrant.
All right, I just asked because we're voting April ninth, so.
Yeah, so it's retro back.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody?
I, I will just say that this was quite a bit of discussion on the Conservation Commission, and they even explored, you know, do they want this as a voting member? And one of the things that came up is, you know, sometimes you're between school years, summertime, you may not have access to the one person. Is that gonna create a, a quorum issue? And so the decision or, or the desire of the Conservation Commission was to add the seat, but not make it a voting member, so.
Or a quorum member.
Or a quorum member, yeah, a good point. So full, full support of the Conservation Commission.
Very good. And the school uses a student rep, I don't know if they still have a student rep, but they always get their thoughts from it as well, and they're not a voting member either, but. So, right, what is the pleasure of the committee?
I'll make a motion to move the charter amendment related to adding a non-voting member to the Conservation Commission to the town warrant.
Motion by McKenzie, second by Barbara. Any further discussion? See, now I'll call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose or abstain, seven zero zero. Next is the review of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five default budget.
This is the fun part of town. This is, uh, it was funny because a couple of the department heads asked, that are new to being department heads, asked, why do we need the default budget calculation? Is the council looking at doing a default budget? I said, no. The reason being is that we're SB two, and it's not like we're old-school deliberative session where, people will throw numbers out and go back and forth, and by the end of the day, you'll have a number, and that's your voted budget for the year. If you go to SB two and you're dollar voting, if you vote no on the proposed warrant of the budget, without another number, what does that mean? So the default budget is basically an option for voters. If they do not want to vote for the budgetary number the council puts forward in the budget, this gives them an option of an additional, uh, number to vote no on, and that would in fact take the budget for the year. The calculations of default budgets are pursuant to RSA's. It talks about taking last year's operating budget, which was thirty-eight million, eight hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, adding in any contracts that were voted on at last year's ballot, which are IFF union contract for a hundred and fifty-four, three sixty-seven, and ASME contract for our local thirty-six, fifty-seven of a hundred and fifty-three, nine forty-one. Another ASME contract for local twenty-nine, eighty-six for a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and you add that to the operation budget, and that's thirty-nine million, two hundred and seventy-two, nine thirty-four. If we had a long-term contract for, uh, an agreement that would be added on in this, if we had a bond with the debt service, that would be added into this. But we didn't have those, we only had, um, union contracts and general appropriations. So you take the thirty-nine, two seventy-two, nine thirty-four, you bring that up to the starting point of your budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. And then in those, each contract that we voted on last year, we had year two of the contract. So we add those numbers as year two, because those have voted on and already been ratified, of a hundred and six, seventy-six, one thirty. And then we had NEBPA twelve in the last year of their contract, with a five-year deal of a hundred and sixty-four. That's all gets added into default budget. Because we have health insurance in the contracts, we have to provide the union members' health insurance, and that was five hundred and seven, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. There was a little decrease in workers' comp of roughly four thousand, five hundred dollars. Then we have to look at one-time capital purchases. And we had, as you know, the gas station was one point four million, we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the sprinklers, safety sprinklers, not a ground sprinklers, and a couple other, the, um, the trailer at Solid Waste, and one other project, a total of one point eight million dollars. It has to come out of the budget because it's not recurring capital expenditures. And then you're allowed to adjust for your debt services, plus or minus. The default budget is thirty-eight million, four eighty-four, two hundred and forty-one dollars. So that's thirty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, two forty-one through this calculation. How does that relate? So you take the thirty-eight million dollars, and we, we estimate the revenue, add in tax overlay, tax exemption, property tax levy will be around like twenty million dollars. The valuation, the default property tax rate would be three dollars and ninety-four cents, compared to the proposed budget tax rate of four dollars. Now, there's always one factor, and that's the estimated revenue of twenty-one million, dollars per estimated revenue in the current budget. Included in that money is nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of, of, uh, use of fund balance. That would be a decision by the council at the time of setting, whether or not they would like to use that money to offset taxes, or because we're at the default, not to use that money and save it, that's where we come up with the six cent difference. If we didn't use that money for, um, if we gave all that money back, the nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, if you use it as revenue, it'd be a twenty-six cent difference on the tax rate. Because the appropriations from thirty-nine million, seven seventy-eight, five sixty-six, minus the thirty-eight million, four eighty-four, two forty-one is one point two million dollars, that's roughly twenty-six cents on the tax rate. Estimated revenues difference is twenty cents to the good on the tax rate to come up with a six cents difference.
Very good.
So for the non-union employees, um, are they included in the general town operations line?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I'm being distracted by the sound of the shovel we got. Sorry about that. In spite of that, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do, Nancy.
Maybe just to speed this along. I'd like to move the default budget of thirty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-four dollars, two hundred and forty-one to the town warrant.
You want to repeat the number?
Thirty-eight million, four hundred and eighty-four, two forty-one. Thousand, two hundred and forty-one.
Thank you.
I'll make a second.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, second by McKenzie. I think you said four hundred and eighty-four. Is there any further discussion on the default budget? Call the question, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose or abstain, seven zero zero. All right. Let's review and make our recommendations to the town warrant.
Did I make suggestion? That you table that until next week, because Tuesday, because you still have a.
Couple more.
You have, uh.
You did suggest.
Yes, you do have a public hearing that you continued, and you do have a petition warrant article as well to go on.
So the motion would be, the motion would be to table it until Tuesday, February twentieth.
Had to take it up as new business number two.
It's new business.
Second.
Nancy Harrington made the motion, seconded by Nancy Murphy.
Seconded.
Oh, Tom seconded, sorry about that, I thought you did. All those in favor, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose or abstain, seven zero zero. No minutes, no comments from the press, no comments from the press, there's no press, comments from the public, comments from the council?
Good meeting, busy. Got a lot done.
Drive safely.
Move to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second.
Seconded by Nancy Harrington. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Oppose, abstain, seven zero zero. Thank you everybody.
Thank you.